Meeting called to order. Today is Tuesday, July 16th. It is now 8:02 PM. I apologize for the late start, but our sewer commission meeting has been canceled, so that makes up for that. John, we read us some prayer.
Let's follow heads, please. Heavenly Father, we ask for your blessing this evening as we gather together. We ask for your guidance in all matters that come before this council. We ask that you surround us with your divinity and your grace. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Jay Wilson for the leadings.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to point out that those two items were not on the agenda because they were on the sewer commission meeting agenda, which that got canceled, that's why we did that here on this agenda.
Councilman Lacherty?
Here.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Council Vice President D'Amico?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
There is a quorum.
Under section forty-two dash forty-six dash four and forty-six, forty-two dash forty-six dash five A2 of Rhode Island general laws, the town council will close the executive session meeting that was held tonight, July 16th, that began at 6:40 PM, that discussed A litigation, Diane Calcy versus Wes Warwick at Al KC 2016 dash 0776, and B personnel pursuant to Rhode Island general law forty-two dash forty-six dash four, closed meetings in Rhode Island general law forty-two dash forty-six dash five A1, purposes for which meeting may be closed for the specific reason of discussing allegations made at the May 28, 2019 town council meeting during public comment against the town solicitor.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Excuse me, I have a right to object, I believe. On item B, I am the person that these allegations were made by, and no one on this council contacted me, got any information, and knew anything as far as details. I would love to know how this was discussed. Second of all, it's regarding personnel and the laws that protect personnel, meaning employees. By his own admission, the town solicitor has called you clients, not employers. So I am making this public, that I am objecting to the way that this was handled, and I'm sure I'm never going to know what the result of the discussion was, but I will make it public that those allegations were by me. None of you, except for one person, made any approach to me to find out details. No one asked for copies of the documents. So I object to you closing that meeting the way it is with improper information. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance 2019 dash four, second reading, sponsored by Council Vice President D'Amico and ordinance amending Appendix C Traffic ordinances of the Code of ordinances of the Town of West Warwick. Junior Street, one-way sign, Junior Street bus lane, Wakefield Street at Main Street, no right turn.
Move the ordinance.
My second.
Move in second, discussion?
It was passed last month ago, it's just the right-hand lane will be a bus lane, the left-hand lane will be traffic lane. It'll be permanent, it won't be certain months, certain hours, it'll be permanent.
I just want to confirm, so that's the entire Junior Street from?
From Main Street around behind where used to be the junior high?
Yep.
And coming out on Hay Street. We sent a notice to anybody of the residents there. We sent a notice to Thundermist, and to my knowledge, nobody commented on it today.
So up from Junior Streets, only going up and to the right and not coming back down at all?
At all. The problem was that...
I understand, you could do it different times, I understand.
Al, are you in contact, I mean, this is good, it's an ordinance, and we can always say to people, "We have a town ordinance," but this is obviously going to affect the school and traffic.
It was requested by the school.
Yeah, no, it's a benefit.
So I just want to make sure that the school does their part in making sure that everybody that's going to Forgan understands this is a new pattern. Is that...
When will this go, how long does it take to go into effect now? Will it be in effect if we pass it tonight for the first day of school?
I believe it starts 20 days from now.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I mean, we should just do our part to make sure that people are aware, I mean...
It was requested by the school department.
It is a mess the way it was, I mean, this is a good change.
I just want to, I just don't want anything to come back on us. So I understand it's correct, it was done by the school department. So they will be aware this is in effect, and they'll be able to get out to the people of Forgan, correct?
Yeah, they, as...
I just want to make sure, Al, because it's going to come our way.
The superintendent was at the meeting that this was passed by the traffic committee that requested me to present the ordinance.
Okay.
So she was there, and she was, you know, spoke in favor of it because of the mess that was going on down there, so they know.
It's my understanding that they are proponents of it and actually wanted the change.
Yeah, it was, it started with them.
Yes, but point of discussion on the, right off Wakefield Street onto Main Street, it came to my attention fairly recently that that device is a state device?
The, well, the chief is here, but we're just going to notice that this, the state has to approve it.
Correct.
It'll be reviewed by the state traffic commissioner.
Right, and I know that they said that we could pass the ordinance and just not put up a sign. I'm not comfortable not knowing what that answer is. I would rather wait, I'd rather table that piece of this. That's me personally, because what they've said is, you can't put up a sign and if, and correct me, Chief, not if I'm wrong, if you were to issue a citation, it would not be valid necessarily.
I would think that we can't get state approval until you pass the ordinance. So the ordinance can be passed, but not enforced by the police department, because they don't have the authority to do so until we get the state approval. But I don't think the state will give us approval until you've put the ordinance in place.
I'm not sure that's what Major Archibald said.
I'm not sure that that's the process for that.
Right. Yeah.
In the past, anything that happens to affect a state road, the state traffic commission will study it and give their blessing. I would suspect that you could pass it pending their approval, and obviously if you don't put the sign up, we're not going to be enforcing it. And there's a time lag generally for public awareness for that to happen.
But my understanding is from the correspondence with Major Archibald, again, we could pass it, but why would we pass it if the state may have questions or an issue?
That is true.
Yes. So if we could just table that piece of it...
Just make a motion?
So I'll make a motion that we table the issue of no turn on, no right turn off Wakefield Street onto Main Street.
Second. Move in second, all in favor to omitting Wakefield Street?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Now, I'll take a vote on it. Any public comment on the ordinance itself? Bearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I hope yes.
Ordinance number 2019 dash five, first reading sponsored by President Goslin, previously tabled, and ordinance amending section 508 and adding section 508-1 of the West Warwick Pension Plan excluding fire and police.
Move the ordinance.
Second. Move in second, discussion. Al, I think the chairman of the pension board is here. Al, can you come up to the mic and just give some clarification? I know you weren't here last meeting, that's why I couldn't table, answer the questions.
Good evening. Got your questions?
Just with this ordinance, what changes are you looking to have done here? As far as the ordinance itself, excluding police and fire? Is this more about the hours, the...
The hours and the money.
Because one thing that was brought to this council, I want to say five, four to five years ago, with police and fire, was that it was brought to our attention that if we upped the amount of money they make per year, they'd be able to, more details, which retiree detail is actually cheaper than having an active detail. So the council at that time voted on that, and now this ordinance is looking to have municipal employees to be able to come back and make even more money on the pension that they're receiving already, correct? Is that...
Yes or no? The detail part wouldn't have anything to do with it.
No, because they don't do detail, but again, the dollar amount is, what was the old dollar amount?
I don't have that in front of me. But basically, it's always been in there for a person retired from the town. Most of the time, they come back to work, it was limited, amount of hours and amount of money in a year. They usually did consulting work, or the person that replaced them was to train them, get them up to speed as far as what they needed to know. So there was always an ordinance that specified how much money or how much time, whichever came first in a year that they could work. They couldn't work over that. I think it was just a loophole, it got missed and it dropped when the change was made, and I don't think it was intention to write it out. So we just looked at it in, but as we looked at it, we suggested, our thought was, the economies went up and that amount of money that was suggested that they make, we upped that amount just to correspond with inflation in that, because otherwise, that dollar amount wasn't correct as far as, you know, as time has gone by. So if we're going to amend the ordinance and add it in, we just thought it would be a good idea to either bring the hours and money on up, whichever one you ran into first you reach a cap.
Could you provide us with the ordinance, with the new changes you want to make to the ordinance, so we could have both at the same time, and have someone come up and explain? That's how we're used to having it, from Al DiFiore. He'll provide us with the ordinance, line out the changes that are made, explain those changes, because right now, we're looking at a new ordinance, correct?
Right.
Without having anything to really go by, because you're explaining this to us, I'd rather have it in writing if you're going to look for us to make, look for me to make a decision on.
Okay, yeah, there is a previous ordinance in that, but if you want, I'll get all that information and come back to you next meeting. That's not a problem.
We need to be able to disseminate the change in language.
So this is actually the pension board asking for this change?
Yes. We noticed that, right now, there is actually, the way it's written, an employee cannot come back to work to the town after to retire. So right now, there is some people that are doing that and violation of it. But we just think it was an oversight that when they made the change, that piece got dropped out.
Where is that happening?
I believe it's the school department.
It's not happening on the town, it's not, well, I'm going to say town, it's not happening on the town municipal side?
Not that I know of. But if you want that, what was over there, I can, I'll get you that and bring it back for the next meeting.
If it's happening, it shouldn't be, that should be definitely a school committee thing, and they should be made aware of that, I would say.
Well, the other question that we had too is how do you, us as the pension or the town manager or whoever, HR, there's no one, no way to know who's working and hours and that, keeping track of it. But I will get you all the information. I know our legal had that, and we just looked at what was there originally, I don't remember the year it was, and then the change, and then we noticed that got dropped out, so we just wanted to make an ordinance, and basically, an ordinance just puts it back in, just amends what was there.
Should this go, it's a legal question, I guess, for one of the two of you, should this go from the pension board attorney to...
School department, excuse me, the school department's attorney should get a copy of it also, but again, just to make sure that everyone's on the same page.
Doesn't seem like we are.
No, not at all.
But would this go to legal first, to...
No, I would suggest that the information, the information that you asked for regarding the ordinance to compare and contrast, that can come directly to the council members and also to the school committee members, and also provide a copy to myself, school committee's attorney, and Mr. DiFiore. I mean, you could, basically, you would be putting that language back in that got written out, but always suggesting is, when you do that, if you decide to do that, it's just amend the figures to reflect inflation and so forth.
So when did it get written out? That's the part I'm not...
I don't have that right in front of me, I don't remember exactly.
So it was a practice that was happening previously?
Yes.
Okay.
And I spoke with, well, I didn't speak with him, I had emails back before Mr. Foray here, and some of that was before his time, so he couldn't answer those questions. So that's why we just brought it ourselves as the board. I'd suggest tabling this matter until the information can be provided, and then put it on the first meeting in August to get some clarification on some of these items.
Mr. President, if they send me both the opening, I could format it the way the council would chart it, so you'll see the outline if that's acceptable in the council.
Yeah, because there's nothing right now outlining the changes. From what I'm seeing, there's an increase that they can make more money or work more hours, but again, in the way, and I was at that pension board meeting, the way they were trying to sell was the council forgot about that. That's not the case. The council was only concerned about the police matter at the time to save some money in detail and make a little more money for the police department. So, you know, that's, so I want to see the changes, and do we want to allow retired employees to come back and work so many hours? And from the looks of this, it's actually very close to some of their pensions. So to me, that's true double dip. You know, that's the question. And so, again, I remember when this happened, I remember the police officers who came to us, the retiree officers, and the former chief came to us and said, "There is savings here, and this would be good, and because we can have them work a little more and bring us in a little more money per year," because the hourly rate for a retiree versus a active is a little different. Am I correct, Chief?
Was that across the board for all departments?
No, we voted on police and fire that night only. We didn't, municipal was brought up, never brought to us, and that was not done by accident. I can tell you that.
Okay, all right. I'll get you the information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. This is going to be the same issue.
Ordinance 2019 dash six, first reading sponsored by Council President Goslin, previously tabled, and ordinance amending section 508 and adding section 508-1 of the West Warwick Pension Board for Police and Fire.
Table this one, too?
I would actually request to table this, because this has the same thing, the changes are not highlighted, so...
Make a motion to table?
Well, we just leave it on the table.
Yeah, we could just leave it. We haven't taken off the table yet.
Okay, okay.
Again, the reason being, the changes are omitted, it's not highlighted like they are most ordinances. So move on to the next G. Al, before we do move on, I'm sorry, before we do move on, you sent me an email saying, so I can make this clear for the council, G and H were supposed to be one item, and we're supposed to choose between the two, correct?
Well, the G and H are both the same, except that in one of them, the wherefore clause states second amended sanctuary town. The other one just states we support the second amendment. So I thought, the different communities are using a different language.
Well, let's move the ordinance, and we can get into the ordinances themselves, but I want to just clarify that the two should have been together and we decide on one. I thought that's what it was.
They're options.
There's options.
Yeah, I gave them two, so you could vote one down and one up if you wanted, whatever it was.
Mary Ann, can you read the first one?
Second Amendment preservation, do you have me read the whole thing or just...
No, just the second amendment preservation.
Move to waive the reading.
Move to waive the reading?
Second.
Move in second to waive the reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Now, I need somebody to move the motion, the ordinance.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Move in second, Al?
I would suggest do the same for the next one.
When we get there.
Put them both on, so you can discuss both at once. G and H.
I don't think we can.
You can't do that.
Can't do it.
I'm not sure which is G, but one of them says, "Now therefore, be resolved by the West Warwick Town Council, but the Town of West Warwick is hereby declared to be a second amendment sanctuary city." Then it goes on to say that you're going to support the second amendment. I'm not sure which one you have in front of you.
G says that.
Yeah.
G says that. G says that, second page, the bottom.
Problem is, before you vote on that, I think we should know what the other one says in my presentation. The other one says that be resolved, the West Warwick Town Council hereby declares its support for the second amendment in opposition to infringement to bear arms. Basically, some of the communities are declaring themselves sanctuary, second amendment, sanctuary towns and cities. Some of the communities are not, they're just saying we support the second amendment. That's the difference. Everything else is identical, the whereas clauses are identical, I sent the council the cases that they cited.
So as an attorney, can you explain the difference? Like a quick explanation of, if we're a sanctuary, if we're in support of the second amendment...
I don't think there's really a legal difference.
And they're in support of the second amendment and being a sanctuary city.
There's nothing, your resolution, whether you pick G or H, is basically a codified opinion of the town council. It's not law, it has no effect on any prospective law or any law right now, or the constitution of the state, or the constitution of the federal government.
State's still in charge of the laws, the town has no...
It doesn't change anything.
Okay.
Basically, the whole purpose of it, and these gentlemen and ladies would say, is that they're requesting the towns go on record, letting the state legislature know that you don't want the infringement on the second amendment that the state legislature, now this is their opinion, not mine, I'm just reporting it, that you're going on record saying, "Hey, state legislature, we got some concerns, we don't want you infringing on the second amendment." And that's what both of these say. One of them says, "We're a sanctuary city," and the other one says, "We don't want infringement on the second amendment," but that's strictly language.
Okay.
Hold on. Everything else is identical. Excuse me.
Mary Beth, get a question?
Well, I think we said that G was the one that said sanctuary city, and I would disagree with that based on what I'm looking at. I think it's H that says sanctuary city.
It's a sanctuary town.
No, but it's not G, it's H.
That's right. G is just in support...
That's right.
...of the amendment.
Of the second amendment. H would actually, yes, so I just want to make sure.
Mine are G and H are the hot topics reversed.
I don't have them, so I don't know.
All right. Any other comment from the council, because I'm sure there'll be plenty of comments from the audience.
Well, I mean, I quite honestly, and I know we had this group, I think, on June 4th, and I think they did a terrific job, I have been invited to go to the range, which I will do. As I said, I will wear my Kevlar vest just in case, but I feel I need more information. I feel we, I think they did a great job, I think you all did, and I was impressed with the presentation, but I've also received a lot of email and correspondence from people who want to tell the other side, and I'm not sure that, I'm prepared tonight to make a vote on anything, but I certainly do want to have more information, and I want people to feel like they're heard, so that's all I would say.
I would agree. I feel like I obviously support the second amendment.
Absolutely.
I've fired guns my entire life, I think that we have the right to bear arms, but I am concerned that I might not be voting appropriately, given the little that I actually know or maybe understand, I feel ignorant on this subject when it comes to creating a sanctuary city. I just feel like, you know, I feel like I want more information.
So I did a little more homework. I invited for the record Senator Satchel, Representative Serpa, Representative Norae, and Representative Jackson to be here. Some did share their opinions with me. The majority are in support of the second amendment. I've also reached out to the police chief, if he wants to share his opinion, he can come on up to the mic if he'd like. The only one, and I apologize, I have not reached out to the superintendent of schools, but in all honesty, I'm feeling a little different than you, because I know I reached out to everybody and I got their opinions. I know some people shared with me that this could upset the state or whatever. I made sure, some have shared with me with the leadership that's up there right now, they don't feel there'll be many changes, if any changes, to the second amendment with the two leaders that are up there in Senate and House. So, you know, I've done a little more homework on this.
I guess I don't even know...
But I do have, and I've had constituents of mine and of all of us send us emails, and I think some are here tonight, and I'd be more than happy to hear from them.
Well, my big issue at first was originally, I was hoping we weren't putting something in that was going to make our police officers do something contrary to the state law, but from talking to you, Council President Goslin, that's not the case if we were to...
That was my biggest concern also, and I think I've had private conversations with individuals that, you know, if it's going to change and disable our police department and whatever it may be, then it's not fair, you can't change, we as a town can't change state law.
Yeah.
And state law always supersedes town law.
So, I mean, it's important for people to realize, no matter what we decide here, it's really just us making like a formal opinion, it's not going to change anything. I mean, if we support or don't support, we'd be making a statement, but it would be no more than that. Nothing we do tonight for this resolution would be legally binding whatsoever, either way. It would be, of course, yeah, it would be sending a message, but just to be clear for everybody, nothing we decide on this will, it won't change any laws, it has no legal binding power, whatever we decide on tonight, one way or the other, so.
I have one person stand up, a length of speech, still in bar, you can come up to the microphone if you want.
And actually, and I've still never been shooting, but my son has been going down to, Dave might be able to tell me what range it is, up on Sandy Lane, he's been going, they have a kids' class, the last month and a half, he's been taking it every Saturday.
Sandy Lane?
Yeah, off Sandy Lane in Warwick, I don't know the name, what do you guys probably know?
Okay, I don't want to go through everything that we spoke about last time, I don't want to repeat that much of that, but yeah, there were some questions that came up, especially the section about the police officers not enforcing the law. We say that night of the meeting that we, no way want the police officers to not enforce any law. When a state law goes into effect, it's law. The police have to do what they have to do to enforce that law, correct?
Correct.
Okay? We're not asking for that, all right? We want the police to do their job. We support the police 100%, everybody in here, when we back any police officer that's on the street having a scuffle with someone, if they need a help, every one of us will jump in and help, okay? We just want to send a message to the state house to say, knock off the crap going after the second amendment guys. The second amendment guys are not the guys out there causing the problems. The problems are, like we said last time, the bad guys that are out there with multiple infractions, that are buying guns illegally and everything else. We passed all our background checks, every time we go buy a firearm, we fill out that paper. Well, Mark, you guys must get calls from the in-town gun stores when people want to purchase a gun, right? And we have to clear those guys before they get there, right? There's a waiting period, everything. I mean, we do what we have to do. I mean, I've had background checks for everything I've done in this town, whether it's coaching soccer, baseball, or whatever. I have no problem going to the Attorney General's office to get a background check if I had to borrow a firearm, that doesn't bother me at all. I got a squeaky clean record. And most of the people in here have a clean record, or else they wouldn't be here. The problem is, there's groups that come and try and infringe on the second amendment. Now, the way we feel, if you don't like guns, don't buy a gun, it's not a problem. If you want to learn about guns, contact any one of us, we'd be more than happy. I'm an instructor, and probably a dozen instructors are there right now. We got the owner of one range right here, who has classes at his range, Midstate Harbor College, Kyle. He has classes, he has instructors up there, he'll work with anybody to teach them the proper handling of firearms. You know, we're not after this town to become lawless, everybody running around with a gun on his side, up and down, you know, no, that's not what we want. We just want to send a message to the state house, knock the crap off, you know? Go after the real problem in the town, you know? That's basically it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or anything you got?
Thanks, Dave.
Just take your name and address for the night.
Hello, my name is Erica Lebrun, I live at 24 Kenmore Street, West Warwick.
Just want to bring the mic down, they can't hear you in the back.
Erica Lebrun, 24 Kenmore Street, West Warwick.
Did you hit the button?
Is it on now? There we go? Yes. Yes. I'm new at this. My name is Erica Lebrun, I live at 24 Kenmore Street, West Warwick. I did provide a copy of the comments that I'm going to read tonight. Before I do that, though, you have the difference in language between G and H. I would like to comment on that and say that sanctuary is generally something provided to a person and not a thing. I think it's rather insulting to say you're going to provide sanctuary to a thing. So what I'd like to do now is respond to some of the reasons that I've heard for adopting this resolution. The first being that new and proposed state gun laws are unconstitutional. In 2008, the District of Columbia versus Heller affirmed, and this is mentioned in the proposal that you, the resolution that you proposed. But beyond what is in the proposal, written in the resolution, this states that the right to bear arms was not a right to keep and carry any weapon whatsoever, in any manner whatsoever, and for whatever purpose. Since then, six U.S. Courts of Appeals have rejected Second Amendment protection for assault weapons using D.C. versus Heller's precedent. Laws passed at the state level undergo careful vetting and many revisions to ensure that they are constitutionally sound. Second reason I've heard for passing the resolution is that we don't need more laws, we need to enforce the laws that we already have, that safe law-abiding gun owners are not the problem and are being victimized by gun laws. We had the federal assault weapons ban from 1994 to 2004. There was a 37 percent decrease in gun incidents and a 42 percent decrease in gun-related deaths. When the ban expired from 2004 to 2014, there was a 183 percent increase in gun-related incidents and 239 percent increase in gun-related deaths. New laws that have been passed in Connecticut since Sandy Hook have resulted in the fastest drop in violent crime in any state over the last four years. Yes, we do need enforcement of these existing laws, but new laws do make a difference. Third reason I have heard is that state leaders are not supposed to tell us what to do, and they're supposed to represent us, that passing the resolution is to represent the people and to send a message to the State House. In 2016, the Rhode Island statewide poll on gun violence showed that 83 percent of Rhode Islanders were in favor of restricting guns on all elementary, secondary, and school grounds, except by police, retired police, and resource officers. 75 percent of Rhode Islanders are in favor of banning high-capacity magazines with more than 10 rounds. Many Rhode Island residents, and including West Warwick residents like myself, are lobbying at the state level for the laws being proposed and passed. This resolution does not represent me or my voice as one of your constituents. Fourth reason I've heard is that the laws, the gun laws being proposed will result in a financial burden due to the unfunded mandate. The assault weapon ban, the high-capacity magazine ban, and the Safe Schools Act that were proposed by the Attorney General and the Governor would not have had the power to confiscate guns from law-abiding citizens. The Red Flag Law that passed last year allows for the confiscation of weapons for a person that has been deemed a danger to themselves or someone else. This is confiscation on an individual basis. Financial burden is a dramatic reason for the resolution and an overreach. Finally, municipalities do not have the authority to regulate firearms due to preemption laws. Police must enforce the laws that have been enacted. Gun law debate belongs at the state legislature and not at a town council meeting. Ending gun violence will require people on both sides of the issue to agree to compromise. This resolution increases the divide between us. I am not opposed to the Second Amendment. Many members of my family hunt. Both of my sons have grown up in scouting in Troop 1 Arctic. They both know how to shoot. The Second Amendment and gun ownership can coexist with common sense gun laws. I'm asking you to please vote no on this divisive resolution that the town, and demonstrate that the town of West Warwick respects the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comment? You can get up again if you'd like. I just don't want this to turn into a debate.
No, I just, she made some valid points for her side, and I appreciate her opinion. The only thing I see is, like, everybody says on the opposite side, there's not going to be gun confiscation and stuff like that. We've got, what, 19 people now running for president? And out of those 19 people, I think there's already six that have already declared that if they become president, they're going to have a massive gun confiscation. So, I mean, you know, they're coming out and saying it as they're running for office, you know, and then they're going to take an oath when they get in that office to support the Constitution and all its amendments.
None of that will have any view to today's resolution, though.
So, yeah, it doesn't affect this resolution, but that's, you know, the mindset out there on the other side is confiscate, 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 you know, and it's not going to change. The only way you're going to do it is to send a message and knock this stuff off, you know? Some of the numbers that were presented, I think are a little skewed one way, you know? And the other thing is, everybody's blaming assault weapons. There's no assault weapon. Like I said last time, AR-15 stands for Armalite Rifle. That's the company that makes the rifle, not assault rifle, okay? Anything in this room could become an assault weapon. Chair, microphone, water bottle, if you decided to use it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Mr. Gill.
Thank you. Mike Elman, I'm on John Street in West Warwick. I've been in this town for almost 20 years, and I've been, or at least tried to be active in the town, in the community, with the Neighborhood Watch and some other stuff that I do. And my paper doesn't want to stand up. There we go. So as for the two resolutions, it really doesn't matter to me which one it is, because it's just a wording thing of preference on our part. If we don't want to be a sanctuary town, we don't want to be a sanctuary town, we preserve the Second Amendment, and I'm perfectly okay with that. And as for the Heller decision, they actually also said that firearms in common use are lawful. And assault rifles are in, or what people call assault rifles, the AR-style rifle, are in common use, are one of the most popular rifles. So that, according to Heller, is a lawful firearm. And those are the ones that are trying to be banned at multiple levels. So if that did get passed, it would probably end up at the Supreme Court as a constitutional question. But what I really want to speak to is the budget, again, because we know that's been a hot topic the last couple of months. And part of this is basically saying that if the state passes these laws, we're going to have to come up with money somehow to enforce them. I don't know how our gun locker at the police department looks, but if we end up having to confiscate firearms from people, do we have enough space? Do we need to build a new facility to house these things? Do we need to hire another person to do all the paperwork that's required by these laws? And it comes down to, do we have the money to spend after we just went through all the stuff we went through with the budget, trying to find money and not overspend? So that's where my argument's going to come in on this, is we don't have the money, and by signing this resolution, all we're doing is telling the state that we don't want to have to enforce unfunded mandates. We don't like these laws that we're trying to pass, especially because they're not providing us any funding to enforce the laws, as much as the police are required to. They're also required to house them, they're required to file three copies of paperwork to three different departments, I believe, to the Attorney Generals, to the town on file, and is one of the locations, I don't remember off the top of my head. But there's a lot of paperwork, there's a lot of storage involved, if we have to hang on to these things for 10 years, 15 years, or permanently, or however long, until we can do whatever we need to with them. So I say, I would like to recommend that you guys vote for this resolution, for whichever version of it you prefer, but I also want to make sure that our budget doesn't get overrun with unexpected expenses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comment? Yes, come on. Just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Rhian Edmore. I live at Ford Gerald Street, West Warwick, near the high school. I just wanted to vocalize my own opinion to the council as a West Warwick resident, that the right to bear arms shall not be infringed means something to me and my family, who's a military family. I personally don't see a reason to own a gun in my house. I have kids, and anything you hide, it's a challenge to find, so for me, it just, it doesn't mean much. But my beliefs will always be that that doesn't mean that everybody else can't have them if they choose to. So I ask of you as the council to please vote to allow us to be a sanctuary city, not to change laws or to go against the police, just to show the state that we do actually care. The Second Amendment, the Constitution, all of it means something. That's all I have to say on it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I will state for the record, I do not own a gun, never owned a gun, have not fired a gun since about 11 years old, so.
Don't be able to shoot.
It's not, it's not been, not a desire of mine, hunt is not a desire of mine, but again, I know people have their own desires, and I do support the Second Amendment, not even on a gun, so.
I just had a question, and I apologize. Were there laws passed during the legislature this year that impacted the Second Amendment?
No. Not this year.
Only because of laws.
Well?
Because of laws.
Okay.
Introduce the laws.
All right, all right.
Did they even get to the floor? I don't know the answer to that. I didn't.
One did.
One did? And how was that, how did that vote go?
It passed the Senate, but failed the House. It wasn't brought up now.
I don't think it was ever brought back up.
Yeah, I was told it wasn't brought back up.
No.
There's too many of them to even keep track of.
2025 a year, they keep coming back up.
Just want to elaborate, and the gun laws, I'm sure none of them passed, whatever.
Just state your name for the record.
Dan Bedandi, formerly of 74 Cleveland, and he lives right over the border in Creston, no? But what happens is, every year, it's, you know, I mean, seven years go after, you know, the tragedy at Sandy Hook, started off with a couple of gun bills, next year it was several gun bills. It's doubling every year. I mean, we have, I mean, I, this year, I can't even count how many legislation, how many bills that are presented on a state level, and every one of them, like, was insane, like, taking, stripping your gun rights, and nothing in any of these bills, the dozens of bills, targets criminals. It says, oh, Dan Bedandi, you care if this passes, you have to turn your AR-15 in, my semi-automatic, I'm sorry, my high-capacity magazines? I have owned guns since I was 18 years old. I'm 45 years old, never committed a crime, I had a pistol permit and everything else, I was an armed guard and everything else. But every year, because, you know, everybody says, well, the bill's been passed, it's no threat. Every year, and if you could look at back, you could go to the State House's website, every year, it just magnifies. Double, double, double of these anti-gun bills, and that's why we're here for. You know what I mean? That's why we're here for it, to say, you know, because we spend countless hours at the State House. I mean, you would not believe it, we get there about 10, 11 in the morning sometime, and last time I testified, it was about, literally, 1:30 in the morning. I was there for over 12 hours before I got to testify, before the Senate, and every year it just gets worse. I mean, we, next year, I mean, we're going to have to put tents at the State House, that's the way it's going, and we just want, you know, our towns to say, hey, listen, it's like, you know, we're not violating the laws, we're not trying to change nothing, we just want our towns to say, hey, listen, we represent the people enough, that's all. And again, if you support the Second Amendment or whatever, you have a right to own a gun, and surely you have a, you do have a right not to own a gun. And we're not here to debate that, we're not here to say, hey, we want the police to violate the law, no. The law of the land is the Constitution. It's far supreme above any city, state, or federal laws. And that's all we're asking for, is for you to, you know, when you took your oath and everything, to support that, that's all. And, but thank you for your time.
No, it's just, my point being that there are many laws that, even if we, if we were to pass this, my guess is you're still going to have to have a tent next year at the State House. This isn't going to change that, I would think.
Well, hopefully, yeah.
And we hear, I personally have heard from both sides, and I'm sitting here wondering, and I understand we've been elected to represent you, but is this a question that we should be answering, or is it a question that's on a ballot at some point in time that the people answer? And that's just something I'm throwing out there. Because there clearly are two sides that we do hear, so.
Oh, and it's all about one thing. I mean, I'm a parent, I'm sure these ladies here are parents, too.
Yep.
And all of us, everyone in this room could all agree, no matter which side you are, that we care about the safety of our children.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean? And that's what it's about. That's why the founding fathers wrote the Second Amendment. It's not only to protect them, you know, for duck hunting and everything else, to protect ourselves, our property, our family, and everything else. God forbid, we, as a gun owner, I can speak for any one of these guys here, we would never in the world, ever, want to turn our firearms on another human being, never. I dread that day to ever come, you know what I mean? But, you know, I mean, unfortunately, we have evil people in this world, and we have the right, we're the only nation now, basically, that has this right, you know what I mean? And if you look at all through history, every dictator took the guns away for us. They led to mass genocide, genocide, major losses of civil liberties. We don't want that in this country. And I know, because your mind says, like, we're just town councilmen, really, we can't do anything. Well, you know what? You're part of the system. You know, you're part of this great government, you know, even though it's a small-town level, but you still are part of that, you're part of this history, you know what I mean? And we respect you all, we ask you to respect the Constitution, and just say, hey, listen to the state, we're going to stand by the Second Amendment. It's not a political issue, not a Republican-Democratic issue, it's a constitutional issue, you know, for we, the people. I'm independent, so. Anyway, so that's all we ask of you guys.
I know I personally do support the Second Amendment.
Thank you.
There's no doubt about that. It's just a question as to what the constituents in the town, and it's divided, you can see that, and what is our place to pass an ordinance or not pass an ordinance? And that's just a question that I have, that's all.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But absolutely, I do support the Second Amendment, I wholeheartedly.
Awesome, thank you, because I've got family who fought in the revolution, so.
I'll go back to Mr. Bedandi's comment. You know, I have a counterpart that actually lives in Connecticut at work, and he's an avid gun collector. Since a lot of laws have changed, he's had to pack up his guns and send them to Texas to his daughter's house, because of certain guns he's not allowed to have in Connecticut anymore. But again, he's the age of 62, he served in the Navy for 25 years, I'm sorry, Air Force for 25 years, and he says now all his rights have been taken away, and he's been a Connecticut resident his whole entire life. He's looking at retiring and leaving Connecticut to go to Texas to get away from what was his love, and he has two types of shooting. He's a photographer, and he's an avid gun collector. And so he shared with me how he hates Connecticut government because of what's happened. And he says, yes, you know, we use Sandy Hook as an example, he used another situation that happened there as an example, and he says, yes, it did happen, unfortunately, you know, how did it happen? Who got that gun? And, you know, and again, that's all on the state level. That's their decisions to make those laws and to protect the cities and towns of Rhode Island. This, again, is just saying that we support the Second Amendment, that we support, we don't want to change any laws here, we don't want to disable our police department or anybody. So that's all this to say, and, you know, I'm kind of in support of it, but I wonder.
I will tell you that I don't agree with naming us a sanctuary city. I agree in supporting the Second Amendment, I am not so.
That's the second one, right?
That's the second one.
Well, I don't know.
I, like Dave, I don't own a gun, I've never fired a gun. I don't have a desire to, just not my thing. But I do, I believe, like in most cases, that abuses are the cause of the problem. It's not, it's never like that, in anything you talk about, it's not the responsible people that cause things, it's when somebody abuses the system, or takes matters into their own hands, whatever you call it, everybody has to pay for it. And I think if you took guns away, then those that want to get a gun will go and get a gun. It's that simple. I want to make sure that our law enforcement agency is not affected, but I do believe in the Second Amendment, in the Constitution, and I don't want to take that away from anybody, I don't think that would be right. So I, in this particular instance, I agree with Councilman Williamson to support the Second Amendment, but at this point, not being a sanctuary town.
And I would agree with both. I do believe in the Second Amendment, I have fired guns in the past, I enjoy firing guns. You know, somebody mentioned something about other countries where, you know, they've taken guns away, I mean, we can hark back to 1933, when, you know, before the Third Reich, there was a registration of weapons, and, you know, we'd never as a country want to be in that type of situation where, you know, guns are being taken away from us because from us, because that's what the Second Amendment allows for, for us to protect ourselves. But I, just again, going back to the idea of the language of sanctuary city, I just don't know what it fully encompasses, so in my opinion, I would vote that we move the first resolution. We vote on the first resolution.
Move it? You just moved it? Oh, sorry, we moved, we're on.
Yeah, so, can I ask, Dave, you said you talked to our representatives, and I said, can you give us some feedback there?
Representative Norrie is in support of the Second Amendment. He actually told me he was gonna reach out to you and rest of the council if he had a chance to this weekend. Representative Jackson said he'll review both resolutions and get back to me, that was early this morning. He has not, Representative Serpa has not responded at all. Mr. Satchel, he has mixed, mixed emotions, he's definitely in support of the Second Amendment, but he's not, he's not for a sanctuary city. So, and that's being kind, you know. But that's, that's where our four legislators in the State House stand, and I think I can honestly speak for them, is what they said to me, it's because some of it's in writing. And I did meet Mr. Norrie face-to-face, because he gave me a Rhode Island state flag for the nine-year-old All-Star team. So, we talked face-to-face over it. And that's, and that's where I stood, and like I said, I do have an email from Chief Knott, if he does want to come and speak on it, he can if he'd like, I don't want to put him on the spot, but he.
I think you just did. So Chief Knott, what do you say?
Again, like I said, I sent the council president an email. I'm a twenty-five-year law enforcement officer, spent the, almost exactly half my life now as a sworn law enforcement officer, protecting the Constitution and protecting people's rights. So I am obviously a supporter of the Constitution, it kind of guides my daily activities. The two concerns that I shared with the council president were, first, the, the language of law enforcement using sound discretion, and how that's interpreted by our citizens, not on either side or whatever, just the police department, the use of discretion is vital in our job, it's the way things function and function smoothly, allowing officers to use discretion on what we consider minor crimes, and education on how we can get people to do the right thing. When it comes to serious crimes, discretion diminishes, and law enforcement officers are expected to do what they need to do. In this particular case, gun laws passed by the state legislature, I don't expect my officers to use discretion, if there's a violation, I expect them to follow through to the fullest extent of the law. My point being was that the forum for debate on firearms legislation is with our state legislators on State Capitol Hill, and that's the forum for the debate on both sides and either way, and they're, they're charged with coming up with a final decision. Once the law is passed, I expect my officers to follow the law, and the next forum for debate, when a law is challenged on constitutional things, or Defense Council, is the, is the state's court system or the federal court system debating, depending on where that goes. So the forums for the debate are those two entities outside of law enforcement on either end of the spectrum. I expect my people to do their jobs. The second point that I wanted to make was initiative that I'm taking on behalf of the Police Department this year and next year, is to enhance the efficiency and safety and security of our evidence storage. General evidence, drug evidence, firearm evidence, and also the safety and security of our department-owned firearms and SWAT team firearms. I intend on spending money out of this year's budget to do that, and then whatever is left of that initiative, I intend on working towards capital expenditure proposal for fiscal year twenty-one. So I wanted to bring that out to his attention now, that that's part of the initiative I have, it has nothing to do with any laws that are passed, or whatever mandates come down, because right now I don't have the space for it, I don't feel comfortable dealing with what we have on hand, which is why that's an important initiative to me, to make that more efficient and more secure as it stands on a general operating basis.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So, so is there, is there language in either of these that you would like to see modified a bit before you are a hundred percent comfortable?
As far as the language goes, I, I have no objection to any of it. I shared my support, that mirrored what you all had said, you know, my personal preference is the, the first one that says you support the, the Second Amendment, as opposed to sanctuary-city verbiage that in my opinion, you know, and this is only my opinion, as a, as a citizen and a person, not as the, the head of a law enforcement agency, is that I'm used to being Switzerland and mediating issues. Sanctuary city sort of goes to an impression of extremism, and I, I just, I don't like going to the extremes, I prefer the middle of the road, mediating and, and working things out, so.
So the language that says West Fork Police Department exercises sound discretion when enforcing laws impacting the rights of citizens under the Second Amendment, you're comfortable with that?
With the understanding that our discretion is, is, we're following the law.
As it gets more serious, you have less discretion. And then, actually, the, the last part of it talks about West Fork Town Council will not appropriate funds for capital construction of building space to purchase or storage systems of storage weapons seized pursuant to requirements set forth in any legislation. I mean, that's kind of, that's, that's a little scary to actually put that in.
That, again, it would be an opinion of this council, not an ordinance, so future councils could change their mind, but you really can't allow for any type of future spending on whether, you might need storage because you decide to have four hundred police officers, so I mean.
It does say, seize pursuant to the requirements set forth in any legislation, but not knowing what that is, I think that's a rather broad.
Right, which is why I highlighted the fact that I, I have intentions to work on some initiatives now and next fiscal year, outside of anything the state decides to do.
So, so I think we have to be cognizant of what that says. You know, if the state laws does, does change and Chief Knott wants to do something, this says we.
Still the resolution, still, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, but if, if we're saying we're not gonna do it.
But again, a resolution is not binding by, it's no, has no statutory authority, it's not even an ordinance, so it's not a law even at the municipal level, it's just a, like I said, a codified opinion of this council. And opinions can change.
And if he's already doing it, and they pass a law, what could have actually, we might not approve it in our budget anyway, to, to say, he's already done it, and he already beat the system per se.
Even if something should happen in the future, your hands are not tied about providing storage space for weapons with the police department.
I just want to make sure people understand that, and don't come before its next budget season, because Chief Knott wants to build something, or has to build something.
I guarantee you're gonna have, you're gonna have Defense Council use this resolution in any gun case the town of West Fork's involved in, if they can. So I mean, anything that's always reduced to writing can be used to the fullest extent possible, doesn't mean it's gonna go anywhere, but people will attempt to use it, and they'll interpret it their own way as time goes by.
So I guess I would ask the group that, how, how important is that, the budget piece in that, that really doesn't have anything to do with the Second Amendment and supporting the Second Amendment? So I guess that's a question that I have as a councilperson.
I guess since I spoke about the budget earlier, I should speak about this. So what, what I feel about this is basically, first off, Chief Knott has already said he has it in the plan, so it has nothing to do with future legislation, he's already planning on doing this over the next two years. So it wouldn't apply in his case, in our case. But additionally, I just had a thought while I was sitting down, and I just kind of blanked out when I got up here, but.
I do that all the time.
Yeah, me too, yes.
So yeah, it's already planned out that he wants to do something over the next couple of years, it was not related to that, which should eliminate that completely, that argument, because it was announced publicly, in a public forum, that the plan's already in place to do this. And it only states that it's not to allocate money for something based on a future law, not something based on no funding ever to expand the police department or the storage facilities. So as long as there's a reason for it, that isn't coming from an unfunded mandate that I spoke about earlier, then there should be no problem with this. And again, this, all we're doing today is saying, this is how we feel right now, and this is a message to the state saying, we don't like your unfunded mandates, stop telling us that we have to spend money that you're not gonna provide for us. That's basically what it, what it comes down to. If the state wants to give us money to pay for those upgrades, we're not spending the money either. But it's the unfunded part of these mandates that, that is the problem, and that's why I like keeping that section in there.
And, and I guess I'll go to a crazy extreme, if something comes down that says, state of Rhode Island says, all guns come off the street, and Chief Knott has to take all guns off the street. My guess is he's gonna have to build something to, to collect them.
He's probably also gonna have to hire a few more officers to do that, too.
I, I agree with you, but, but we've already determined you're gonna do what state law says, correct?
Yes. Right.
So, so this.
It contradicts, it contradicts what state law may say, because it's speculative in nature and conjecture. If you're gonna pass either G or H, it should be without that final paragraph as it relates to whether or not the council will allow the chief to apply for funding to build any additional space to store weapons seized by any future, I mean, you're talking very much now into the future as to what could occur.
Could happen, right.
Not what will happen.
Right.
So it's very difficult for them to allow, I mean, you take it to the next extreme, a group could come in here and say, if the state of Rhode Island fails to provide funding for state education purposes, that the town will not, nor will the town build any new schools. You could put that, you think, it doesn't have any weight, it has absolutely no authority. So this resolution, I mean, they're putting in a clause that will be attempted to be used against you in the future, should something happen. This particular part of the, of the resolution, this paragraph, could be addressed at a future time, if in fact, there was bills before the legislature that looked like they were gonna be passed.
And you could always pass a resolution to void this section of the resolution as well.
I would be more comfortable not tying our hands, or the police chief, as far as...
You could just omit that paragraph.
You can make a motion to omit that paragraph.
Which one are we on?
G.
G or H is the paragraph, it's the last paragraph.
We're on G, both the same.
So G, and G is a non-sanuary city one. So I would, I would vote, I would make a motion that we remove that paragraph regarding, well, actually, it's a little different.
It is.
Yeah, it's a little different, so both of them, both those last paragraphs are a little bit different now.
Yeah, but the, the main part was the sanctuary, they are a little different. Do you have a problem with G?
Well, again, that does, it's not just a paragraph, though, it's not.
The first part, the first part of the last paragraph on G is not the same as the first part of the paragraph on H.
They're, they're combined, so that, that paragraph that I read about, West Fork Town Council affirmed its support for exercise of sound discretion is in that last paragraph, you don't wanna, you don't want to take that out, clearly. And then it talks about the funding.
What I understand, you want to omit the last paragraph on the one that deals with Second Amendment. No, you want to keep that. You want, you want it to read, if further resolved, that consistent with the policies of the town and its police department and the chain of command, the West Fork Town Council affirms support for the exercise of sound discretion in the enforcement of laws impacting the constitutional right of citizens under the Second Amendment, period. And everything else after that would be omitted. What's on page, my page three, where it says, be it further resolved, council, that comes out. Well, no, 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 half that stays in, half of it goes out.
Again, but in, because in the other one, it's two separate paragraphs.
After the word amendment, there'd be a period, and then everything else would be omitted. And then, everything after, and further affirm, and its intention not to appropriate funds, so it would stop at Second Amendment with a period and remove those last couple of sentences. Yeah.
And that's in the, that's in the resolution that does not refer to a sanctuary city.
As a sanctuary city, correct. Yeah, and what I'm saying is, that paragraph that begins with, be it further resolved, that's coming out. Not the whole paragraph, only half of it. Up to Second Amendment, under the Second Amendment, and then period, and then, and further affirm. You're looking at, you're looking at the wrong one.
Yeah, you're looking at the other one.
You're looking at H.
The other one is two separate paragraphs, Al.
Okay, I got it. Got it? So is that what you want to do? Did you make a motion?
I did make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, and all in favor to remove after Second Amendment, all the way to the end?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. I was still on the actual resolution. Any other comment on the resolution?
I have to put it way up. Good evening, Brandon Fien, twenty-four Kenmore Street. Just a question, I've been listening to the resolution, and when you say you're in support of the Second Amendment, this blanket statement, it sounds like, what does that really mean, though? In relation to what? Is it in relation to Supreme Court rulings, or who's interpreting your support and how you support it?
We're in support of the, I'll speak for myself, I'm in support of the Second Amendment as it stands today. You know, there are some drastic laws out there, I've seen other states, like I just used Connecticut as an example, and, and I would further support this group if some of those laws came into play, because again, it's not the gun that, in my opinion, it's not the gun that does the evilness, okay? So if somebody has a specific gun today, and somebody went out and shot somebody with that gun, why should the other ninety-nine percent of the people in here be held accountable for something that somebody else did with that gun? They might have had that gun for thirty years, and that person got that gun last week and did that action. You know, it's, it's, you know, it's a tough situation, it's a tough, it's, again, whatever the state laws are, is what they are, and we have to abide by that, our police department has to abide by that. But again, it's just telling the state that, hey, we're in support of the Second Amendment as it stands today.
I recommend adding language as to what the context of the Second Amendment that you, the town supports, instead of just being a blanket statement. I think I highly recommend that.
Well, there's definitely two pages of that in here.
Did you get a copy of that?
Yeah, I guess so. Thank you.
Is there any, is there any merit in taping until we have it all cleaned up?
No, but I don't want to tape it. No, I don't want to tape it. Any other comment? That being said, I'll take a roll call vote, Jay.
For item G?
G, we're on G.
Yes.
As amended.
As amended, yes.
Jason? Yes. Very bad?
Yes.
Josh? Can I vote? Yes. G passed. So do we just, so H, do we just leave?
Take no action on H to be removed from the agenda for next time.
First standing ovation this council's ever gotten, so it's one of the, probably the last.
He's in charges for the West Fork wastewater treatment facility sponsored by Council and Charlie.
Give it, give it two minutes, Marion. Mike, if you could just make sure they take it outside. Okay, Marion, go ahead. Go ahead.
He's in charges for the West Fork wastewater treatment facility sponsored by Council and Charlie.
Move resolution, second.
Moving second, discussion? Jay?
This was something that was brought to us by the superintendent Harrison Sangvalo of the wastewater treatment plan, a few meetings at the Subcommittee. And it's, it's, and he, in the last meeting here, he brought that up as well to the council. And, and I'm gonna let Al take over in a minute, but, on the actual resolution, but all this is, is, is when people want to do some work on the weekends and get inspections done, we have to send someone out there. And really, it's a change in the fee structure to make sure that the town is compensated for the people that go out there. Because right now, the way we have it, and I don't know the exact numbers, but we're, we're going out there and we're making, we're getting paid to go out there, but the people that are doing the work aren't paying the amount that covers our costs. So that's, all this is, is update, and there's some more in the language that's updated as well, just to.
Basically, you're looking for an after-hours fee.
We want to make sure that, we, yeah, we want to... Well, we want to make sure that, yeah, we want to make sure that we're getting, that we're not eating anything.
Now, why would they call, why, is this something like, somebody's doing construction on a Saturday?
Yeah.
Yes.
Cutting into a sewer line on a Saturday?
And sometimes it's the only time they can do it, company can do it is a Saturday. So, and there's not, there's only a few people from the sewer department that are allowed to go out and inspect.
I just want to point out one thing, the construction company's probably going to pass that cost on to the residents, so it's, you know, yes.
But it, but it's not just residents, it's more of, more commercial, more of a commercial thing.
What's the actual change in billing? Like, what's the amount? Like, how much is it going up?
What's going up?
What was it and what will it be?
To my understanding, it was...
Yeah, go ahead.
To my understanding, from my discussion, let me give the background, when this came up with the superintendent in a, in a meeting, it was, he just mentioned in passing, at that point in time, Christine had already sent to me some information. Almost annually, the wastewater treatment plan has had me prepare an update for their fee schedule, and I've come before the council on it. When Christine sent that to me, we dealt strictly with that, I'll call it the overtime, whatever you want to do, issue. So I prepared something and sent it back. At that point in time, I got a, an email from Jim Jeremiah, who said, yes, this is the cause, this is the cause of it, however, we want to make some language changes. So I prepared the whole ordinance, the whole fee schedule, sent it off to the superintendent, to Jim Jeremiah and to Christine. They made some changes, they changed the name of, some of the stuff that gets crossed out, they just gave it different names. They included an annual permit fee, but it was strictly an updating, with the main change being the weekend inspection fee, which was changed to $240, a minimum four-hour charge. Each additional man-hour will be charged at a rate of $45 an hour, and a vehicle charge of $20. That was added. That wasn't there. It's my inhalers, thank you. That wasn't in the prior ordinance, prior fee schedule. That, so that was the impetus to it. And then it was, the rest of it is neatening, clearing up some language.
Yeah, that was, that, if I recall from the sewer commission meeting, the subcommittee meeting, that, that was the big difference, that it was a minimum charge that was going to happen. It typically went over four hours, but if it were two hours, it wasn't worth sending somebody out, and there was no vehicle fee or fuel charge ever charged. So it's just updating it to get people...
We were losing, I don't know the exact, the exact fee that it was, but we were losing money.
Right.
So this just covers us, covers the employee.
And I have to say that this was reviewed by Jim Jeremiah, by the superintendent, and by Christine, they all went over and came back.
We talked about it two times. Just makes sense.
Any other questions? Any public comment on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Minutes of the previous meeting, resolved at the minutes of the May 28, 2019 executive session, May 28, 2019 town council meeting, June 4, 2019 town council meeting, June 11, 2019 FY-20 budget workshop, June 18, 2019 executive session, June 18, 2019 town council meeting, June 24, 2019 FY-20 public hearing, June 25, 2019 public hearing, and June 25, 2019 town council meeting are hereby accepted.
Move resolution.
I second. Moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Consent agendas, license applications, resolved that the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Recuse myself? Councilman Messi, recuse himself.
I, my business is, my renewal is the second one on the list, so I'd like to recuse myself from the second, from my business, but, but be able to vote on everything else.
All right, so, who do you want to move the resolution?
Vote on his first.
Okay.
Signal it out, and that way you're recused.
What is the name of your business?
It's, Love Your Lawn Landscaping LLC.
Okay, so, I move that we approve Love Your Lawn Landscaping renewal?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
What was, what was Jason's?
Oh, Jay, he's got too many on his.
So now, get back in the game, and just go do the rest of it.
Okay, so, I move, I move to vote on the remaining licenses?
Move.
For approval?
Second.
Move discuss, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Jay, you're set.
Amplifier loudspeaker and dance live bands, resolved that the town council hereby approves the following application, come from, excuse me, Club Frontenac, attention Scott Norman, date August 25, 2019, time 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., location 1143 Main Street.
Move the resolution.
Second. Moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Amplifier loudspeaker, speaker and dance live band license, resolved that the town council hereby approves the following application, Carleen Martus-Hulk, date July 27, 2019, time 3:00 p.m. to midnight, location 26 Crossland Road.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion, she's had this already many years in a row now, never have any issues, fights the whole neighborhood, that's probably why there's no issues, probably the best way to do it. Any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Resignation from the West Warwick Sewer Use Board of Appeals. I don't have a resignation. Here we go, I'm sorry. Result of the town council hereby acknowledges the resignation of Janice Pachino of the West Warwick Sewer Use Appeals Board.
I'll move the resignation.
Second. Moving second.
I would like to actually thank her for all her years of service publicly.
Yeah, here's a reason why I missed this. I guess I'll, I mean, I personally am not going to accept it, I'd like to have a conversation with her. Her, I think I know this is about, but that's just my personal opinion.
Nope. I'm, I've tabled it.
I, I personally would like to make a motion to table until I can talk to her.
I'll second.
But, but we are, procedure, there was a motion, second, then...
There's a motion, the motion has to be withdrawn.
So whoever made the motion originally.
So you have to file a motion, motion to withdraw, it's going to be seconded, discussed, and if no discussion, it can pass, you withdraw.
Yep, I make a motion to withdraw.
I second.
Resolution?
All in favor to withdraw?
Aye.
All right. I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
West Warwick Planning Board, appointments, West Warwick Planning Board, appointment to the West Warwick Planning Board, resolved that town council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member of the West Warwick Planning Board for the town of West Warwick, with term to expire on 7, 2024.
I will move the application for discussion.
I'll second.
Moving second. Discussion?
Know this gentleman?
We have two applicants, a few applicants.
Oh, wait, okay.
Oh, not for planning, I thought we just had one.
We have one.
Well, I click on planning, I got two people.
I only see one.
Yes. Zoning is two. Well, it said, actually, somebody said that we need to do planning or zoning.
What?
I got two.
So what names do you have? Because I have one.
I have Joe Garcia.
Mr. Garcia filed an application that says Planning Board or Board of Zoning Review.
Okay, that's the only one I have.
He's an either-or. And then you've got a zoning board review, we got Peter Kelsey, and then Joe Garcia.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm clicking on planning, downloading, it says planning PDF, and as I'm scrolling down, I have three individuals.
Are you on the top left, sorry? I only have one.
I'm on three. Joe Garcia, and then? Joe Garcia, then I have... Megan. With a BCI.
Yep.
Yep.
Then I have... Megan.
A letter from his...
Oh, no, that's recommend. Second letter from Joe Garcia, and then it goes on...
A resume?
Yeah.
Is that a letter?
Yeah, it's all...
Megan Gilbert is not, no, it's my fault that I read that.
Yeah, no.
All right, my fault. I'll take a point. I wish I could get this thing working, because I went to look at small letters. So we have Joe Garcia, who's already on the planning board.
No.
No, it's new, new appointment.
Are you, are you Mr. Garcia?
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Come on up, Mr. Garcia.
And Marion, who's, who's position, is there a vacancy there? Tell, tell me what that, is someone coming off?
I have to look at the books. Oh, there, it's right down here, let's see. Upcoming appointments, there's an opening right now on planning.
I believe it's mine, who knows, I'm not positive.
Has he resigned?
I believe it's, I'm not positive.
Did he ever?
Did we have to submit anything?
This is the first I know of.
So there's an opening in planning, and we have one applicant, correct?
It says upcoming appointments.
Yeah, I understand that, but...
Okay.
That means opening.
But there's no opening right this, when it meant last month, there was no opening.
I didn't know there was an opening until I reached the general.
Well, as, as the attorney for, yeah, that concerns me, yes.
Is, is there an opening on the planning board? That's the first question. If there's no opening, then this is...
Well, clearly, there's an opening on the planning board.
Was it advertised three meetings?
Because that is...
I was told there was an opening, that's why I applied.
Yeah. No, I understand, I want to make sure...
And this has nothing to do with you, Mr. Garcia, this has to do with our procedures and, yes, yeah.
Nice to see a fresh face, to be honest. All right, thanks.
But I, given the confusion, I think we should probably table it. And I, it has nothing to do with you.
Yeah.
I would be, if you table it, I would be happy to look into this one and the next one.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to table.
Second.
And then you can give us a, you can let us know as the attorney for, so, I apologize, and you've sat here for a long time.
Yeah, it was exciting.
Yeah.
Maybe someday.
Gets like that on the planning board, too. I have a motion to table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Same with the zoning board, no action?
Probably, because we did both, so...
Well, I heard Peter Kelsey's name, and he's on...
I...
It's a reappointment.
Yeah, but is there, is a term up, though?
Yeah, Mr. Kelsey's term is up. I did have a brief conversation about his BCI to make sure that was in.
He is in. He's there.
Because he was, one was very vocal about not...
Right, no, I remember that.
All right, so, so we're tabling this for now, until we get more information.
Hold on then?
Done that, correct, we voted?
Now we're on zone, now we're on zoning.
Planning board, okay.
I'd be more happy to table it, too, because it's up to you guys now. Yeah, I'll make a motion to table. So we got clarification that these two positions are open.
West...
How we vote, back to you.
So is zoning one position or two? Is it just, is it just because Peter's coming up for open?
It says one position, zoning term to expire 7, 2019. One position, planning, term to expire 7, 2019.
So we probably, we should, no.
One of each.
Yeah.
Well, I want to move the name of Peter Kelsey for reappointment.
Wait a minute, there's a motion to table.
Nobody seconded, nobody seconded the table.
We didn't move on to the zoning one yet. So we're talking planning right now.
I thought we, we tabled.
No, there's, there's already been a motion to table on planning, and it passed.
Okay.
Now we're on to this zoning, no action taken, or do we move to the table?
There's been, I have a motion for Peter Kelsey. A second?
So...
Discussion?
I certainly want to meet with Mr. Garcia and speak to him and learn his credit, you know, his credentials and everything, especially if Wayne is leaving planning. But as far as Mr. Kelsey, he is a good person to have on zoning, he has certainly proven himself. I've worked with him on zoning, I learned a lot from him. He is definitely the smartest man in the room when those meetings are being conducted, no offense, Al. But he, he really knows his stuff, and he's not someone we want to lose on the zoning board.
I can say to the council that since Peter's been on, on the zoning board, he, I don't think a zoning board meeting goes by without me contacting Peter, or Peter contacting me, to get into the detail of one or more of the applicants. Again, no reflection on anybody, but Peter is as thorough in, in researching every issue that comes up. For example, in one of them at the council, that issue with the, the island at the corner of Route 2 and 3.
Yeah, he picked up on that.
We all reviewed it, Peter came up with the fact that they wanted to put a sign on state property and do away with the exit. That's the type of work, Peter is thorough to the end, and...
I, I will say, Peter could be a pain in the rear end, but you're absolutely right. He's very thorough, he does visit the residents' properties, I know, I had a situation where a shed in my neighborhood, he reached out to me, he reached out to the neighbors, he reached out to the homeowner, he went on site to check out that shed that was built, very abnormally, and, you know, he came back and he reported it back to everybody, you know.
By the time we get to the meeting, Peter has total information, including the fact that Peter not only goes to the site, but Peter will contact me, because I've got the authority to go to the building official to, hey, go check this out. And we now have, under investigation, three or four situations where zoning boards have rendered decisions, Peter is determined that they're probably not being followed, and he's contacted me, and I have the building official now going in and getting into that issue, which is, I've been here since 2004, that's the first time that's happened.
I agree with you.
So there's a motion and a second?
Any other comment?
Yeah, I, I'd like to say, my vote is being based on, like, other votes for other boards, there's knowledge and experience, and if someone on a board is, has that knowledge and experience, it's, it's their position to lose. And I think...
It could be a loss.
It would be.
I think we all agree.
It would be. And, and there, there have been losses already, and I, I take the person out of it, but look at the experience, and it's his spot to lose, so...
Any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
So, so Mr. Garcia, we will, we will take your, the planning board application up at the next meeting. I will tell you that I loved your letter that you wrote, talking about your wife and your kids, and it was a nice letter. Thank you, yes.
Next meeting, I think, is August 6th, 5th? August 6th, I think it's on 6th.
Tuesday.
You have Tuesday night.
It is a Tuesday, yes.
See you next.
Thank you, and thank you for being patient. Thank you, and thank you for being patient.
Appointment for the West Warwick Tuxed River Authority, resolved in town council, hereby appoint the following individual to serve as a member of the West Warwick Tuxed River Authority for the town of West Warwick for the term to expire six thirty, twenty twenty-two. This is a reappointment.
I'll move the name of Jim Sullivan.
Second?
Move in second?
No, I happen to know Jim Sullivan. Um, and I've, I've, he's in my ward, and I've worked with him, um, with issues down at the fishing pier, he has a good set of eyes. Um, he used to be, he's a reappointment here. He used to be involved in the Coventry, um, Tux River Authority. So, again, he knows the laws, he knows the rules, he's in supportive of the DEM regulations set down. I'm looking at fishing pier, that's the only thing I've done with him on, but, um, I've been to some PRA meetings, and he's very vocal, he's good representation. So, again, it's, it's, it's his to lose, so.
Any questions? Any comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, there was a second. John Demi called before he stepped in.
Certification of the town budget resolved, and the attached certified as the town budget approved as of July eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, all day referendum.
And a motion?
Motion to pa- uh, pass the budget as approved by the voters on July eleventh.
Second?
Move in second, any discussion? Again, second time around, vote was seven oh five to five eighty-seven to approve the budget. That being said, any comment from the council? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Town manager's report?
Most of my comments will be about the, uh, the budget, but, again, the council's, uh, recent action just before this is your final, uh, action on the part of the budget. Uh, at this point, uh, certain documents and forms will be filled out, sent to the state, you know, as far as paperwork required from the state. And, as a result of this, the tax bills will be printed up, and the schedule that I have is start printing possibly this Thursday, and they will go out the week of the twenty-second, probably middle to late. The twenty, week of the twenty-second, uh, they'll have a due date of August fifteenth, but, uh, residents can have a grace period till August thirty-first to pay for those bills.
Can we not put, give them the grace period, can we just put due August thirtieth? Because a lot of people don't realize the grace period of that fifteen days. We are a little late this year, and I, I think by putting, unless you're gonna put grace period fifteen day on August thirtieth, but a lot of people say it's June fifteenth, I mean, uh, July fifteenth is usually what it is, and everybody comes rushing in here and flooding town hall, or wherever it may be, to pay that bill, but yet they really have to, uh, July thirtieth. But can we, can we do that for August and, and say the due date is August thirtieth, so, I mean, they're gonna probably flood it August thirtieth, too.
Because if you do that, if you do that, people see that, they're gonna think that, that August fifteenth, the day in the grace period is till September fifteenth, uh, till September, because typically, I, I mean, I've been there on the, the last day, and people flood in here on the end of the grace period.
I agree with you, I, I think it, I know what you're saying, but there's gonna be, there's gonna be some that, that would say
They think that there's more.
I have another fifteen days, there's not a day, I have another fifteen days.
Correct, that happened, yes. I'm not guilty.
I think it might
I think the way, we keep it the way it is, and people will know that they have to, if they rush in here that day, then they paid it fifteen days early, there's no harm to fall, I think doing it the other way, you can get into problems.
It might be a moot point, anyway, because all, they're pretty much ready to go with all the programming, and ready to go.
I think people are ready to pay it, anyway.
They, I'm sure they are.
Not willing, but ready.
And I just want to say, uh
Hold, hold on, he has a comment on the tax bill.
Yeah, I have to say this, because otherwise if I get home and I don't say it, since you brought it up, I'll get in trouble. Um, my wife complains about the bills, they don't talk about the grace period on the bill. It's on the website and other places, there's nothing on the bill, just gives you the due date of the fifteenth, and that's it. So if you're gonna do this, I think just put the grace period on here, so the ones who will have trouble, or if they got it late in the mail, or whatever, they, they know that. Thank you.
Can, can you confirm one thing? Um, if people are say not happy, if they don't agree with their, their real estate tax bill, what is the dates that they have to, to appeal that?
I know, there's, I don't know the exact time period, I know there, there are, it says thirty or sixty days upon receipt.
I think it's thirty.
And, uh, but we can, certainly we can double check that, uh, we can also put that on our website, too.
If, if we could.
On the assessor's website.
Alright. Thank you.
And just as a, a, a postmark, uh, I'd like to thank those who came out and voted. I mean, this is a, a very important issue, and not every community has a budget referendum where the public can actually weigh in on, on, uh, the budget expenses, so, uh, I just wanted to say thank you for those who, uh, came out and voted, whichever way they voted. And again, the budget that was, uh, approved is a, a sound fiscal budget, which is essential as the town goes forward with its fiscal recovery. Definitely a, a strong, sound fiscal budget is necessary. Now, it's, at the time, uh, we put off some things, uh, during this time of waiting for the budget's middle approval. Uh, we suspended our negotiations with our collective bargaining negotiations with our unions, but we'll be starting those up again in the near future. And also mentioned that, uh, we will have new auditors coming in, uh, Bloom Shapiro, which is an international firm, very reputable firm. They, they will be coming in next month, and it is always, uh, good that, uh, there's a change in auditors. They come in, they look at things from beginning to end, charter ordinances, resolutions, and they tend to be very thorough as they come in. So again, it's another set of eyes, and, uh, so we're looking forward to them coming in. And, the last item is, 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 uh, recognition. Uh, last Friday, there was a swearing in of two, uh, young firefighters, completed the training academy and completed the, uh, fieldwork and in-house training. And what makes this interesting is that one of the candidates, one of the, uh, new firefighters is a third generation West Warwick firefighter. His father is a current battalion chief, and his grandfather was the chief of the department. So that was very int- very, uh, gratifying to see that, and the second firefighter sworn in is a second generation firefighter, so there will be a formal ceremony, uh, later for a lot of the firemen who have been promoted, but just wanted to make that recognition.
Any questions for the town manager?
Um, I have a question, and I'm not sure, uh, adding it to the agenda, but regarding something that we, as the town council, would ask him to do.
You can go ahead if you want to talk to him about that.
I would like to add to the agenda, uh, having the town manager reach out to the pension fund, and
Pension board.
Pension board, and, uh, let them know that, um, we believe that the two percent COLA in Mrs. Kelsey's case should be paid, and that there is no, uh, solicitor, I would ask for your wording there, that there is no litigation that should hold that up. It is not a party to any litigation that's going on.
Currently, no, there's nothing to do with, uh, the two percent COLA that was reinstated, I believe, as of July first, with the, uh, Kelsey litigation.
So I, I would ask that you reach out to the pension board and let them know that.
They resolved the issue, it's been going on three or four weeks now.
Yes, that's the consensus of the council, yes.
Yes, it's an ASAP item.
Thank you.
Discussion action, Granicus pension bills previously tabled.
Go, make a motion and take this off the table?
I'll make a motion to take it off the table.
Second?
Move in second? Al, uh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Move in, uh, Al, discussion, Granicus pension bills?
Uh, first, uh, before we go further, I wanted to apologize for not making that last meeting with some of the stuff that was already there. I ended up having to work late, and, uh, some of my jobs, sometimes I have to take all the electronics off, because it I eat, so I have no way of knowing time, or even to let you know I wasn't coming. Uh, second of all, on the last one, I did not know that you did not have the previous ordinances and that, and so that you knew what the changes were, so if I'd known that, I would have brought all of that, but I didn't realize it. Um, on the, uh, the one that we talked with the manager on, on the bills for Nihart, we had talked about splitting them. I don't know what your decision was on it.
Well, you were gonna bring it back to pension board.
Yeah, and we agreed to do the, the split, um, if, if you did.
Can I just ask a question, though, probably of the manager? Why is this not just the cost of operation, or the cost of doing business of the pension board? I, I don't understand how it's the cost of the town.
You are correct, it is
It's nice that we want to split, but why, why are we even talking about a split?
It is a, in my opinion, it is a responsibility of the pension board. The work that was on benefits the retirees, it doesn't, doesn't benefit the general government. We had a meeting where we agreed to disagree on who's responsible. And, after the meeting, you know, the, at that point, there was no agreement. And next step would have been, uh, bringing it to the town council. After the meeting, I, I reflected and thought that if it was, uh, the, the bill has to be paid, so that, in order to just resolve the issue quickly, without having to spend much time, effort, because it's not really a material amount of money. That we could just resolve it and, and move on. I did not hear back from the, uh, chairman, and I understand why, because his chairman was out of the country. So at that point, then, it was on the agenda, it was scheduled on the agenda, and my recommendation was, as it was originally, you know, not to pay it, so, but it is a responsibility of the pension board. My, my, my recommendation or email to, uh, the chairman was, if we could just resolve this without having to bring it to the council, and move on to other things. I mean, it's a relatively immaterial item, and to spend a lot of time and effort on it, it just didn't seem worthwhile to me. So that's how it sort of evolved as to the recommendation not to do it, because I haven't, did not hear back from the, uh, chairman.
So, we appoint the pension board?
Correct.
We have, there were decisions after the pension board makes a decision.
Well, this is
There's not a lot of communication, as we spent an hour tonight, talking about the miscommunication between the pension board and the council, but then, we're on the hook for paying half the bill that we shouldn't pay.
Well
That's the way I see this, in layman's terms, I don't think it should be, I think it should be on
Well, the, the, the facts of the issue are this. The valuation was, was either completed or just about completed. Then, in late November of two thou- two thousand and seventeen, I believe, because the police were awarded a retro payment through arbitration. And at that point, the town, uh, didn't agree with that, and looked to appeal the decision. And the work that eventually had to be redone, because the, the arbitration award was enacted. So it required a recalculation of the items, I mean, the, uh, evaluations, uh, for the pension board, and for those who had retired under, uh, under that had to, for the pension board had to be recalculated for their pension, uh, purposes, so it was like a restatement. So, the position of the pension board was that this expense was not due to the board's action or the actuaries, it was due to the appeal, the arbitration decision and appeal. That's the position of the pension board. My position was that there's no benefit to the general government for this, it's a pension expense, so it shouldn't be covered by the pension board.
So, let me
That's how, that's how it evolved.
Let me ask you a question, and, so for instance, we spent an hour tonight, hour, hour and a half discussing a matter. We're gonna ask you for a cost analysis, okay, of line eleven of the MOU. We're asking you to ask the pension board to get a quote, a cost analysis of that, because that doesn't seem to ever be done, if it should have been done. That's something we have to determine. Now, so the question is, once you go to Nihart or whoever and get that cost analysis, they're gonna bill us for that cost analysis. That's a pension matter, okay? Who's responsible for paying that? The pension board or the town council? Or the town?
Well, that is a, a good question. I, I would believe that if, if I contact the actuary, and I request work to be done, they would want an agreement to be signed. And if I'm doing something on behalf of the town or council, I would believe that would be a town cost. It's, they didn't, they're not asking for it. We, the town is asking for it.
It's a lit- it's litigation that derives from the decision by the pension board as it relates to a benefit. So the information required would have been part and parcel of all the pension documents to begin with. The pension board's attorney does not represent them in litigation, the town does, but everything regarding the case is one hundred percent from the pension.
And if the pension board says they don't want to do that?
Well, I've already, I've, I've already
Then what? We don't have a sec?
No, you don't, no, you're, you're autonomous, you're autonomous. You're autonomous, they're autonomous, you don't have any say, you have no authority over them. If they choose not to provide the information, then we're stuck with what we have as far as trying to litigate this matter without that information. However, of course, it's not right. The pension board should, I mean, no
But if they choose not to pay the bill, they vote to not pay the bill.
But also, we're going a little far upstream as it relates to the agenda items tonight, so I wouldn't really get into it any further than that.
No, but this has to do with pension billing, it's, this is related, because
No, the pension billing that they have
Because I was just gonna talk to the town manager, as councilwoman just asked about the two percent, then I was actually gonna direct the town manager to get a cost analysis to number eleven on the MOU.
I understand that, but the matter before the town, that's been on the agenda before, has been tabled, deals with two specific bills from Nihart. It's got nothing to do with anything about anything else.
But, I'm talking about, well, I'm trying to prevent this from future, you know, is, Al shouldn't, Mr. Muru should not be having to come here every month trying to get money from us, saying this is your expense and our expense, whose expense is it?
Well, that, that could be done, that could be done by having either a work session in public with both parties here, or executive session, or have it as an agenda item, so people will know that's being discussed, if they want to attend this meeting, they can attend it. Right now, the agenda item doesn't really tell people you're discussing anything beyond the two bills that are in the packet, which have been, like I said, tabled in the past. So I mean, I'm not objecting to what you want to do, I'm just saying you may not be able to do it based upon tonight's wording of the council agenda.
At the council meeting that we had at the high school, there was a question you asked about, if we agreed to split it back then at that night, you're not gonna pay the bills all the time for the pension board.
The confusion where it took place, and I think, I was a little concerned with the town manager on this, was he did send us an email saying this should not be our responsibility, but some communication between you two where we can meet halfway down the middle of the road here, and, and, and my concern at that point would be, well, if you're telling us that you don't want to agree to this, and you think it should be a pension board matter, and it should stay on the pension side, then why are you saying we'll meet you halfway?
Well, the, the, what we, what we've talked about that night at the meeting was the billing. After they had that meeting with the manager, we had a meeting with Nihart right after, in the conference room next door. And, we determined that some bills were requested by the Fire Department Union, so that bill got sent to them, and they paid it. And all of them's requested by finance downstairs, so that got turned to them, and they paid it, and then the other one went to the pension board. There was no knowing, when we get the bill, there's no knowing who requested the work. So, when we looked at this, it was basi- everything the manager said
Well, that shame on Nihart.
Well, yes.
And future bills should reflect or request the, the, the work.
Now, they, it's basically almost like a contract, I have to sign each time they want to do something, they send it out, spell it out, and I have to sign for it before they'll do it, and there's a price there, so there's no question about it, because that was another issue we had. We never knew exactly what it was. We, we seen there's some reoccurring expenses that we're not sure why we're paying them over and over, but that's another issue. Um, so, that part has been straightened out, they, if they get a request, they find out who it is, and what department, and get that information before they do the work, so that the billing is done correctly. As the manager said, everything is exactly right, I agree with him a hundred percent. It was just the, the board's opinion, uh, based on, it was an arbitrator's ruling, where the town appealed what was there, and that caused the refiguring, and that was why we suggested questioning that bill and said that we shouldn't be paying for it.
And, and I would also agree that, that the town manager did the right thing in trying to expedite it, get it, it's a small amount of money. What I think I heard on June fourth was you don't believe overall we should, but you did make an agreement. You've gone back to your board, you've, so I, I would make a motion that we pay half of the bill, which I think is seventeen hundred and forty-five dollars. Is that correct?
Seventeen fifty, yes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
Three to two.
Okay.
Nathan, it's of abandoned properties in the west
Hold on, Al, question?
The other part of that was the Granices bill?
Granicus bill, yep.
Um, not so much the bill. We at the pension board, um, have several problems or issues, and We at the pension board have several problems or issues and concerns with that. The idea of recording these meetings and televising them was great. All that research was done legwork, come up with a plan, a company, equipment, put it in, it's been working. Anything that we could find, the pension board was never questioned on it, talked to, involved in any of the negotiations, contracts, or price or anything. We get a bill for it. We have, we didn't have a contract or anything, a language on it, what it was, we finally got a copy of that. 'Cause our concern was, there was four meetings, now there's five since this has started, that the pension board wasn't recorded, but we paid for it. So we asked how that works. Do we get credit, or what goes on? But the biggest concern we had was, we had no say in it or anything, and we feel that if the town wants to advertise all its meetings for all the different departments, then that's an expense. The pension board should be paying that out of the pension fund, because it's not something going along the lines, like the manager said, that's pension-related, if it was-
Do we pay for zoning? Do we pay for, I don't, I kinda don't disagree with that.
The bill, the way we got the breakdown was-
Who manages the Granicus relationship?
Us. We approve it, we-
No, no, who, who actually day-to-day manages it?
Finance, and it was broken down according to how many meetings, there was a percentage on how many meetings-
A percentage, right.
The initial bill. None of us that use it, Al, ever got asked about it. We were told this was already-
But, but do we, do we bill zoning? Do we bill zoning separately?
Everybody gets sewer, zoning-
That's why you gave, you just gave me two different answers. I asked if we billed them early, you said no. And now I'm asking you again, so, just to clarify, do we bill zoning?
Zoning, planning, sewer-
They get a separate bill?
Yep, sewer.
Comes out of their budget?
Yes, town clerk, and one other of them.
All right, then I, then I changed my opinion, but the first time you said that they paid, we paid for it, I just wanna make sure that it's in their budget.
And, and Marian, are you the main contact with Granicus?
No, finance.
So, who, who is?
Finance.
Finance would be, that's just help from the beginning, set up the percentage breakdown.
I, I know this was already talked about, and it, it all relates. It, it just seems like there's, there's a communication breakdown in different points between pension and the town council. And I don't know if the town council would agree to have some type of a workshop with the pension board. So, you guys can, so, men and women can bring your concerns to the council, and vice versa, and, and have better communication, because I don't think, I think things will, they're not gonna fix itself.
I, I will say this, I was part of this with Ed Haru, 'cause I know I had the place wired, Ed Haru did all the setup of this. Nowhere in any discussion from the council was there any discussion of dividing bills or anything. It was, this was, the council themselves wanting to be more convenient to the constituents, to the people who can't be here, there's people out of state, they wanna view the meetings, we wanna have open government, be more transparent. Councilman Haru at the time was very adamant about it. I don't know if it was finance who decided to arbitrarily go and say, okay, so much for this one, so much for that one, so much for this one. In the end, the only thing that doesn't, I mean, all the money comes from us anyway. So, I don't know why we're creating extra work and saying, so much goes here, so much goes there. You know, that's something we as a council party need to discuss at a further date, you know, to say, what, you know, number one priority was council meetings. And then, we pushed for everybody else to be on board. There was actually some groups that didn't want to advertise, uh, televise their meetings. I, I, I forget if it was planning or something-
The redevelopment, the redevelopment-
Which I think they should all be filmed, we have the, do they charge us per, per me- I mean- Yeah, they charge-
They charge us per meeting, it's not like if we-
No. And again-
They should all be filmed, though, that way, I mean-
Everything should be filmed, everything should be open, transparent, so people who can't, I mean, I, I have watched me, I have watched pension board meetings from home. I, I, it's not like I can just come here like I used to, as much as I could. So, I'll watch from home, or if somebody will tell me, hey, you might wanna watch this, I'll go back and watch it. You know, it's, it's, again, I, I understand Mr. Haru's concerns. Again, I don't know who made that decision to separate bills and whatever, it should be one bill and one budget, because think about it, planning and zoning, if it's in their budget, we just have to put it, to take it out of their budget, put it in a line item of Granicus, under our budget. I mean, I know it's too late this year, 'cause the budget's already been resolved, but again, and, and I, and I did hear a comment, the pension board doesn't have a budget. You know, they, they do receive a dollar amount from us, and, you know, they, they pay their administrative fees out of that, they, they do all that. So, but again, I, I think we need to look at the Granicus system and say, who's responsible for paying what, and how we should do it. Should it be just a town item, one item on our side, and that's it? But, you know, that's something we need to discuss at a later date.
Another concern we had at the board is, and I've been digging into little problems as I go along since I got in there, is, has it ever been looked at, checked to see how it's going, somebody do an update, evaluate the system, know how many times it's not working, has it, how long's it take to get fixed?
A lot of times that it's not working, it's either human error or hardware, the voice in the back, and we're responsible for all hardware.
What I'm saying is, you know, like a check and balance and an evaluation, and determine if what we're paying for, is it a contract, and if it expires, is it time to see what the fees are, and is there a better, better option out there?
Now, when we advertise the meeting, we send all the stuff over to them, and then we're supposed to televise that meeting? That's our responsibility. If something breaks here, whether it's a, you know, a human error or hardware, they still charge us, because it's, it's not their problem, per se. Okay, if it was their, if it was their server that crashed on their end-
Right.
Then they could say, okay, that's, that's something. But the, the last issue we had, we had, it was one of the recorders in the back was making that real loud humming noise.
Right.
And then, a couple of times, it was human error. And that's, that's usually the cause of it. And you can't hold the company responsible for our mistakes. I mean, but again, I, I agree with you that we should look at that. They are coming, I think the Granicus contract is coming up to an end next year?
No, we, no.
When is it?
It was June fifteenth.
Was it renewed?
Yep.
When?
You wanna answer that?
I think the way the contract was worded, like some of the contracts that we have, is automatic renewal clause in it, just like our contract with RCC, there was an automatic renewal clause in it. And, and we notified RCC that we were, you know, we may, uh-
But we, but again, Ernie, I'm sorry to cut you off, but we had RCC in here, and even though it was an automatic renewal, we, we negotiated that contract. So, why wasn't that brought before us in May or June, that Granicus is coming up? Because I'll tell you, I, I'll be honest, I've had many departments come here and say, we need to get, we gotta look at Granicus and re, reestablish or look at what our, our recording system and our, our clerk's office has been very concerned with Granicus lately, and I know Elaine has brought it to me, other people have brought it to me that are on other boards and who use that system, and we never had a chance to-
Mr. President, the, the, the communication dialogue's going much further than the Granicus notation on the agenda, so I would suggest that they either be put on the next agenda with some instruction to the manager or clerk, but you really can't discuss the Granicus issue or the, the contract or the resigning of the contract, because it's not on tonight's agenda.
What else, Al?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Maintenance of abandoned properties in West Warwick sponsored by Councilman Nessier.
So, we've had a couple of properties over the last month or so that I've emailed about. One was particularly on Border Street. And when I emailed for them to be taken care of in the past, it was, it was an abandoned property in the past, lean was just put on the property, which is, which is common practice over the course of the years. And for that particular tenant, was when we had, we'd, Ernie, I know you had stopped the overtime at that point, and, and we kind of, and it really wasn't our employees, we hire, we hire an outside landscaping company for, for those types of things, correct, Ernie?
Yes, when the, when the court orders, because there is a process, and at the end of the process, okay, process is, okay, let's say it's grass, high grass, the property owner's notified. And if it's an occupied dwelling, then it usually gets rectified. When there are situations where it looks like it's abandoned, or, you know, the owner's not, not residing in town, then you still have to go through the notice process, finding out who owns it, sending out the letters, sending out the regular certified, giving them time to fix the problem. If they don't, then summons to municipal court, and they have to, you know, appear before quarter, if they don't, then there's a default. The judge can order a fine, you know, so, per day a fine. Ultimately, the judge can order that, it can be leaned, and then you can go through the process of leaning the property, and then we do have a company that will go in upon direction and clean up the property. So there is a process.
So, so one on Border Street, it was one that we've, we've taken care of like multiple times in the past. And when I reached out for it to be done, they were told, I was told that we couldn't have it done. And the only way it got done was I had to go, I had to get David involved, and as a councilman, I think when there's an issue for any of us, there's certain issues that need to be brought before the town council, but as a councilman, what's my, what is my job here if I can't, if I can't send an email and go, can you take care of an abandoned property? It could be a health issue, that, I sent you the pictures of that one. There could be rats, there could be squatters in the household, especially the one on Border Street. We have another one right now on Ridchaw, which I just sent an email to the beginning of this week, I didn't get a response back from anybody. It's awful, the grass is long, there's, there's containers where water's starting to build up, people are now using it as a dumping ground, and it's disgusting. And I just, I don't, I don't feel like every time something like that comes up, when it's a, a small issue that could be taken care of, that I have to involve the council president into the process.
Uh, the, the minimum housing officer went that day to look at that situation.
To look at the one on Ridchaw?
Now, when we, when the budget, first budget was defeated, all right, then immediately had to look at, okay, we're gonna have to go and review, submit a revised budget, that's gonna take time. And again, the worst time for any community for cash flow is June. So, at that point, then all unnecessary expenses were curtailed. Now, that does not mean if there is a health, safety issue, that gets resolved.
That, the one, the one on, on Ridchaw, she was told, when she called, she was told by the, by the office upstairs that we don't have the money to do it now, which I think is, in a situation like that, we're gonna be building a house, it's, it's, I mean, it's a health hazard at that point. I, I've been by there, the house is disgusting, people are now dumping mattresses there on, on the property, and that's, I know that's a separate issue, but I think when a property looks like that, people are more willing to go, who cares about this?
Okay, and, and they are addressed, but there is a process that has to be followed.
But, and now the one on Border, I know in the past we had done it, so-
You see, you can have a property do five times, same issue.
Ernie, I wanna point this out, one thing that, you may not have been town manager at the time, we have our houses that have been vacant, some of them, the one in Mary Beth's ward that I sent an email on, and I CC'd Mary Beth on, that's been vacant now for four years. Sometimes the bank takes care of it, sometimes it doesn't. I, I, I will say, in the past, we've had these problem homes that we're not getting any result, and then we do hire a landscaper, which we have a couple on hand that go in and do these properties. But again, what I don't understand is if we catch it early, because I know, that used to be part of a business that I was in, where I'd go in and clean houses for they go for auction and cut them down. You go in, if the grass is nine inches, eight inches high, my price is gonna be a lot different. If I walk into four feet of grass, and I'm going through that and blowing up my machines and whatever else, and the amount of weed whacking and everything to get it down to run a machine through, the price is gonna go up. So, the, the question I have, especially we have a list of those properties, we've talked about it before of maintaining it on a, like a bi-weekly or tri-weekly basis to keep them neat and clean, and Al, I think you were part of that conversation in the past, and, you know, we started that at one time, and we got away from it totally.
Because it's unfortunate for some of these, for some of these residents that are taking care of their yards, and we're not talking about, we're not talking, they're not getting upset about a couple of inches of grass, I understand what you're saying, to maintain it so you can keep it low. I mean, some of these places look like Jurassic Park, no joke, they're awful to walk through.
One of the problems is the system. From the day that you make the call, it's going to be at least three months before we gotta, we gotta any authority to do anything. Because they, they, the, the system, we've gotta give them notice.
I don't think so, in the past, it has not taken that long. I mean, Border Street, for example, last year, when, when I brought, I brought Chuck Davey, he had it done in like three days last year, so, so-
He may have had some cooperation, I'm just saying-
This is, and this is a, this is, I believe that the one on Border is, I believe it's a hut house now, it's owned by the bank, I'm not sure about the one-
Let me just clarify, Chuck Davey, Davey does a great job.
Oh, he does an amazing job, this is not-
He's on top of everything.
So that's why, that's why, that's why this year, when, when he said we, we're not able to do it, 'cause we don't have the funds, I'm like-
Well, that, that's a whole different, but one of the problems is that if you get the bank that doesn't pay attention, or the landlord, or the owner that's not around, and we gotta go through the process, it's, it's a disturbing, we got the house on West Warwick Avenue that we've been in court for a year now, with the trees and everything else, and, you know, it's-
Yes, I recall, yes, I know that, really, my work is-
You know, it's, it's, she says that this is natural vegetation, the chief has been there, that he can't get a truck in in case, in case of a fire. I've been there.
Yeah.
You know, it, it's, it's the judicial system.
It's just, I mean, it's just frustrating, you know?
It's that time of year, and unfortunately, as we go further down this agenda, I, I understand we cut overtime, we did all this to, because of the budget issues, but this is also the busiest time of the year, and we also are short-staffed, and we're expecting the same amount of work to get done with that staff, and it's, it's virtually impossible.
Needless overtime, I totally agree with the certain times where, where, you know, you, you need to cut costs, but there's certain times where it's necessary. I mean, if we did that in a, in a snowstorm, sorry, guys, no overtime, the streets are just gonna, you know, and I'm not saying it's that extreme.
First of all, again, overtime is a necessary part of our business.
Yes.
Right? So, again, necessary overtime needs to get done, will get done. If it's a situation where it's not warranted, it's wasted, or just scheduled for whatever reason, it's not appropriate, it will not be done.
I agree with that.
You know, so when you say that-
There's a bound, there's a bound.
I understand that completely.
I'm not, I'm not arguing that, but like, as we go further down this list, and we'll don't, we-
We can, we can move on from this, and can we, can we, can-
Al?
We used to keep a list and file on, and we think before we had manager form of government in the town, a list of all vacant buildings. We started doing that because we'd go to a building for a fire or call, whatever, and didn't realize it was nobody, and it'd been vacant. So we started going around different trucks, going to districts and checking out what was there, and kept a list and filed them. So we get a call, we had that, and then we make copies of it, and put them on all the trucks and everything. And we used to give that list to the bill inspector. Back then, we had the bill inspector and minimum housing, and they would go out and when we'd get something new, and go out and check it in, and go through whatever costs, is usually, I think it was municipal court, and they'd bring the owners in and, and take care of it there. And it worked pretty well, and did that for years. And there would be some on there for a long time, for instance, thirty-two carpenter carp, sticks in my mind, that thing was on there for like ten years. We'd go buy it, it'd be overgrown, empty, but we'd make sure that nobody had broke a window or tore plywood off. We'd just take a quick lap around the building, and then back on the truck and away we went. You know, sometimes six months, maybe a month, depending on what we found, but we would do that and just give that information to the bill inspector's office. And that worked well, so, not there anymore, so I don't know what happened, I don't know if we still have that, chief, but it worked, worked then, you know?
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, you can, I'm gonna table the next one.
Potential signage at bike path crossing?
I'm at a table, I, I didn't get to talk to Major Archibald about this, I, I really need to go before, I'll, I'll quickly mention, it's the bike, it's the crossing over near the West Warwick Manor. I know in the past, we talked about like stop signs, that's not what I want here, just more, I, I don't even know what kind of signage we could use in that spot to kinda make me, make people more aware of the bike path. It's not stop signs I want there, I don't know if it would be, I mean, if you wanna, you.
Just quickly, I did, you know, from the traffic safety board, I did offer to go, and I have taken pictures of all of the different intersections and the signage at those intersections throughout the town. I went on- I went on through the general laws, trying to find exactly what were required. I couldn't find a specific thing to find out exactly what we're required to have. But Brookside Avenue is.
It's a tough spot.
It's a tough spot. In the last five years, we did have one incident there. It was a minor injury. So it is something that we need to address.
In your travels tomorrow, go up Boston Street and Coventry, they have all the signage right there at the bike path. Because Boston Street's a very busy.
Not Boston, I'm sorry. You're talking about Washington, when you go past the ice cream place, start going down.
Nope, nope, skip that one.
Nope. In Coventry?
It's right before Jerry's Supermarket, the Dave's supermarket, on the right-hand side. Nope, nope, it's in Coventry. It's on the right, South Main, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
No, not South.
Yes.
I'll get you the name of the street after this meeting. Station Street, thank you, Mr. Rose.
I've got a bunch of pictures that I can share with you.
Station Street actually has all that signage right there, Yield, you know, and I think that's what you can probably use as an idea.
Yeah, so I wanted to be clear, I wanted to be clear, because it wasn't clear here. I wasn't, we'd already went through this path for a stop sign and I know that that has been feasible in that location.
What, comment on that?
Thank you, thank you for looking into that.
At, at the meeting of the traffic committee where this was brought up.
Yeah, it was a while ago, yeah.
Yeah, I kinda threw a stone in the mix because I was concerned and I think Councilor Chadi had one about no swimming on ice. And the concern was, if you put a sign here and someone drowns over there, they're gonna say, why wasn't it signed? The, the issue I raised with the traffic committee was if you put a stop sign or a go slow sign on Brookside Avenue and somebody gets hit up on West Wall Avenue, why wasn't there a sign here?
I think it should be your signs on every street. Any major intersection where the bike path, which we only have, we really, we have five. So there's the one over here, we have the one near Jerry's. I'm trying to think of where, I'm trying to think of the signage.
There's Provin Street.
Yeah.
There's, um, the entrance to the traffic, so.
Yep.
There's Hay Street, there's this, this Provin Street.
Yeah.
And then Brookside.
Yeah, and then three of them are the major, like, busier areas, which would be.
My point was, do all or none.
No, and I agree, and I totally agree, yeah, we'll just, yeah, so if you want to look into that, that'll be.
It's ten signs. Two signs.
All of the paths, intersections that the town had, we always used to strike every year when we strike the roads. Bike path crossing ahead and all the hash marks and the whole nine yards, all those stripes were done. The ones on Provin Street, so those are state roads, the state was hash marking them and marking them as bike paths.
Yeah.
But in the, in the, the striping company has the layout for all in love there, it should be the whole.
And one of the problems, which we can get into in the next, next item on the agenda, one of the problems with that bike path is, is the overgrowth from the bike path at this point, where it is difficult people when they're coming onto the street over there. All right, we all said, you said you weren't gonna talk about that. Well, I didn't know, I didn't know that the chief had done this, I hadn't reached out to anybody, so that was my bad, so thank you.
Bike path maintenance going forward, Councilman Messier, you're busy tonight.
Yeah, the meeting wasn't long enough, so. The bike path is horrible, it's disgusting, it's awful. I get calls every day, I see it all over Facebook and I feel like I have, I can't do anything about it. I mean, it needs to be a priority. I know it was, and I know that you're short-staffed over there, so I'm not, I'm not putting this all on you, but it needs to get done. It's awful, I don't know if any of you have taken a walk on the bike path. I won't walk on the West Ward bike path, I'll go to Coventry now, it's disgusting, it's embarrassing as a councilperson. When people ask me, aren't you a councilman, you can't get the bike path cleaned up? If I can't even get the bike path cleaned up, like, what are we doing up here if I can't get the bike path taken care of? And it's, and it's really bad now, and I don't know how long it's gonna take to get some of it done because it's, the overgrowth has happened so much. I don't know when the last time it's been touched, I don't know if it's been touched at all this season at all. And I think if we take care of it better, I know we used to hire kids right last year, so I don't know what happened with that.
That's a whole discussion.
That's a whole different discussion, but we need to come up with a better game plan in the, in the future to keep the bike path maintained. It is a valuable resource to the community. I understand it's not the most pressing issue, but it is important. We had an issue with the graffiti artist about two weeks ago, and I know you're never gonna stop graffiti. This gentleman wasn't slick about doing it, he filmed a fifteen-minute live video on Facebook of him graffitiing the, graffitiing the tunnel. So he was easily caught, but I think you, you have more of those issues when somebody walks down the path and they see what it looks like and they go, why should I care about taking care of this when it looks like this? Especially, and I get calls from, from residents at the manor every week about what it looks like. And I'm like, I'm trying, I'm doing my best, but.
Councilman, I agree with everything you just said. I can tell you, we finally hired a couple of summer kids, they're on the path now every day.
Okay.
Going slow, it's going slow. As you know, I'm very shorthanded.
Yeah, and I, I understand.
On a good day, I have ten people.
Yeah.
And I don't have many good days down there.
Yeah.
So basically, we're working on picking up yard waste two to three days a week. And then we're trying to do everything else in the other remaining couple of days I have, so. Now that the budget's passed, you're right, we'll, we'll look into using some overtime. I don't mind using overtime when I can come in Monday morning and see results.
Yeah.
Bike path would be a perfect place for that, so we are making some plans. I may even go after that machine again because that'll knock it down half the time.
And especially, I mean, I know, I mean, a lot of people use that path, not only for recreation, but people use it to travel through the community a lot.
Yeah, I understand.
So, let me ask a question, speaking of summer help. A constituent of mine, his son's been doing summer help here for the last four years. He contacted us and we were told, and he, he was denied summer help. He said there was no summer help. And that was in May, he actually said he can come in earlier because he was out of college a little earlier. And, you know, and I reached out to his father and I said, what the hell happened? Because he's been doing it every year, he's experienced, he, no training necessary. And he's working for the school department in the summer now. And, but he's worked for us the last four, Kate Bowman was told, or basically not, not called back or anything.
I was asking personnel for help for Parks and Recreation, I finally got two. I don't even know where they came from, but two showed up and that's all I've been able to muster up.
They have limited, like, what are they using out there, like a weed whacker, a lawnmower? Yeah, I mean, it's not like a lot of equipment.
Well, they'll use the big graveney now, we talked a lot of use it.
Because some of that stuff, I mean, I see, when you come under that tunnel.
Yeah, they're not using chainsaws.
When you come down that tunnel, you're gonna need a chainsaw for some of that overgrowth.
Absolutely.
Or something stronger than a weed whacker.
And again, I was dumbfounded that, he told, he told me there was no summer help in West Wall, okay? But he went to the school site.
I just, I think we need to come up with a better plan, like, going forward to like, to maintain the bike path and, you know, go.
Well, Councilman, I can tell you, unless things change in public works, that's not gonna be possible. I mean, I'm putting out fires every day, that's all I'm doing.
And we talked about.
You have drainage collapsing all over this city, that's a lot more important.
And, and, of course, of course.
I'm not gonna stand there tonight and say, I can do that for you, because I can't.
No, and I, and I mean, I know in the past, we talked about, we do the adoptive spots for certain properties and we were able to, we couldn't.
That's a lot to adopt.
No, 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 not for one company, but if somebody were to adopt stretches of the bike path, I mean, I don't know the process. I know you have it at the DPW, the form, right, if somebody wants to adopt a piece of property. I mean, if different businesses were able to adopt like a half a mile or whatever it is, it's manageable. There's plenty of businesses around here that I know would be willing to adopt a spot. I mean, it's something to think, look, going forward, if we're not gonna be able to maintain it on our own, I don't know how, it needs to get done somehow, you know?
So, so David, then, then if you, how many summer help, you, you planned for four, you budgeted for four?
I have two right now.
But you budgeted for four?
I believe four on Parks and Rec.
So that means you have money, could that be spent on a, someone else to do that?
Yeah, yeah, you know, I, I talk to personnel all the time and I say, do you have any more kids?
I don't mean necessarily hiring, I mean, somebody who does that for a living.
Are they hired through, through, through you or through Parks and Rec, like, who's the one that does the hiring?
They're hired through personnel.
Okay.
We, we don't hire anyone, personnel does.
So going forward, and I know we've kinda touched upon it, but if, if you don't have that, the help, say, for the everyday help, to get the everyday jobs done, what is going to change? Like, if you're always behind the eight ball every day?
We have a staff of twenty-two and he's getting ten.
So are we just?
Twenty-three.
So we're just picking up yard waste and we're just filling pot holes?
Basically.
So nothing else really is getting done?
Occasionally drainage, and most of the drainage is emergency work, yeah, that's what's getting done.
Street sweeping sometimes, is that, I mean, is it still going on?
I had a street sweeper on the road today for the first time in two weeks, because I've had no one to manage.
Has it been, off topic, has it been completed, I know you both.
We only have Phoenix left.
Because at one point, we talked earlier in the season, you were way ahead of the game and you said we're gonna be able to.
We had two sweepers out, we were doing great.
And you said we're gonna go through, you said we're gonna go through twice.
Until the help went away.
Where does it go? Look, where, where does it? I'm asking, I'm asking a serious question. Because, because bottom line is, we, we get the calls to say, why isn't this happening? Bike path, perfect example, I, I agree with you.
You're getting nets up yet?
So, so what's, what's going to change?
I'll answer your question, Councilman. Right now, we have four openings, we just lost two people, they went into other jobs, they left the city. So we have four openings. And this union contract allows people to transfer temporarily into other jobs. I've lost three people to other jobs.
Here?
Yeah, sure, they're in other departments. They're just working in other departments, so that's a loss for me. And, you know, three out on workers' compensation, it's unfortunate, people get injured sometimes. So, and then that's before, so on a good day, today, I had eight people out on the road today, two called in. So I have ten if no one calls in. You're not gonna get a lot done with ten people.
I agree.
That's, that's just the bottom line, so, that's the situation we're in there. And as far as hiring, I can tell you, I've looked over some of the applications we get. We have a requirement that you have to have a CDL to be hired here. And I can tell you, you're not getting quality applicants that you would even not wanna hire. So.
Ernie, can you send me the information of who, who somebody would need to contact? If, like, for the bike path, as far as for help for the summer? Can you send me the information of who they'd need to contact?
Personnel department.
Yeah, can you send me the, the phone number and email? Yeah, and that way, I, I'll post them, if somebody, if somebody wants to come out there and you get two more hands, that'll help to get out there and it moves quicker. And it's already budgeted for us, let's do it.
We kinda missed the boat on a lot of college kids, that's what they do, they come home, they, they wanna pick up a summer job. And I'll, like I said, I'll use, I said the name earlier, Matt Grunia. He's consistently here every single year. Yes, he went to go work for the school department, he's actually learning a lot more, because he's doing plumbing and everything else up there. But he was faithfully with us for the last four years and all of a sudden, nothing came from him. He contacted a few different, his father contacted people, because his father is a school teacher here, and he got no answers and was told no summer help right now.
I, I wanna, we're a little bit off topic, but when you're saying bike path maintenance and you said using weed whackers, is it possible to take those weed whackers and just, probably take twenty minutes, put somebody in Crompton and weed whack?
Sorry, not possible.
Thanks. Well, it hasn't been all year, so.
One thing I will say, and I think I've sent pictures, we do great riding lawnmowers, but we don't get off them.
Yeah, well, see, the other problem I have in Parks and Rec, I have one guy today in Parks and Rec. I have one self long-term, and I have one.
I, I understand.
Had a personal day today.
You need help, we understand that.
There's just no help.
And if we need to hire temporary help, hire temporary. Do something.
Sure, go ahead.
I think with the.
Just come up to the mic, Mr..
I think with the whole schematic of maintaining the bike path, I think if you guys started using, I'll use the term roundup, but not roundup, but a herbicide and start spraying the sides, like other towns do, they spray the sides of, just blanket spray from the asphalt to the fence and kill all that vegetation. You're not encroaching into nature, which is on the other side of the fence, where the, where you've got trees and wood lines and different vines and berries and this kinda thing. But if you cut it down, like we did with the, with the flare mower, and we maintain it with roundup, the stuff is, a three-gallon container is fifty-five dollars, you only mix an ounce and a half to a gallon of water. And you just put on, not even backpack sprays, I know the towns, I've seen them do it, where they spray in the cracks and the curbs and everything from the gas-powered sprayer in the back of a pickup truck. You ride down the, the bike path and with a guy in the back of the truck, a guy driving, and you spray one side going down, you turn around, you come back, you spray the other side coming back, that cuts down the vegetation by eighty percent. And then we don't have to keep cutting it and cutting it and cutting it, there's no need to do it. And eventually, it's gonna turn to dirt and it's good. Otherwise, if you keep cutting grass and trying to cut weeds, the vines are gonna start twisting around the fences and it's just gonna get out of control like it is now. It's called vegetation control. Spray it, blanket spray it from the, from, from the pavement to the fence. Now, you gotta get somebody that's licensed to spray herbicides. But in the long run, you can use that person throughout the whole town. Spraying curbs, spraying cracks, spraying pockalons, whatever, just spray roundup, it's cheap. It's the cheapest way out.
Disagree with you there though.
Yeah, well, I know the whole labor industry, I'm going through it myself, I mean, I just hired five and one didn't make the cut after Monday, he didn't come into work today. They don't wanna do it no more. And in DPW, you're outside, you're in the elements, they don't wanna do it no more, they wanna be.
Well, one of, one of the biggest things in, I think Mr. Pacozia said it, acquired CDL.
Well, that's the other problem.
You go work for an asphalt company making thirty dollars an hour driving the same dump truck that you're driving for the town at nineteen dollars an hour, so.
But, and that's, me, how many, how many CDL trucks do you have in DPW? Right now, that run?
Six.
Okay, if you put out an ad for, and, and you may not be able to do it until you talk to, to, to the union, but to mandate a CDL to get a job with DPW, I think is a little extreme when you have eight trucks that require it.
Disagree with you.
So I think we should try to negotiate something to better the town.
Look at that, we're on the page for two things tonight.
Well, it's not hard.
In, in direct, because this isn't a direct, I don't feel it's a direct reflection on you. I, can I ask you one, can I ask you one question though?
Sure.
When you talk about CDL, if you hire an employee, if employee applies and doesn't have a CDL and there's no intention of putting that employee as a, as a driver, why would that person need a CDL?
So it's very interesting, I could speak on that a little bit because actually the former director is sitting in the audience also.
You guys are way off the agenda on this issue. I understand, but you were talking about bike path and bike path maintenance.
Bike path maintenance.
But now you're getting to.
And this can relate to bike path maintenance.
But now you're getting to issues pertaining to possible personnel, trucks, DPW personnel, and you're just asking to have a complaint file against you.
Okay.
All right. All right.
Please uniform transition proposal, monitor bike.
I hope this is easy.
Actually, these uniforms are outdated by now, that's a.
I'll be very brief.
So prior administrations and our workers have been looking at, trying to address several issues with our uniforms. We've had difficulty over the past few years with vendors not carrying certain things, being out of state, having sales measure people, having to come a few times a year to measure in order to get things. The gray shirts, which have been traditional for now, are being allegedly gonna be discontinued next year. And delivery has been an issue, getting people supplied for the police academy. So we put together a committee to do research on the, the new trends in equipment and uniforms, looking at local vendors with new fabrics and different options they have. So what passed overwhelmingly is using a vendor out of Johnston, Rhode Island, uniform and supply, switching our uniforms to a black shirt, which allows us to maintain the use of our jackets and hats and not have to go out and look for a blue product, so there's some money savings there. And also, one of the trends in law enforcement is the, if you've seen them, an external vest carrier, not so much the military version, but the vest, the ballistic panels are actually fit inside the uniform. It looks like a uniform shirt, but you're essentially wearing a polo shirt or something with a wicking fabric underneath, which is better for comfort, it's more machine washable as opposed to these, which most of the time need to go to a dry cleaner and become very costly, much more costly and timely to replace. So we formed a committee to do that, our union voted on it because it is a negotiable item and that passed overwhelmingly last week. So this is a general awareness for you folks, because I'm not proposing to spend taxpayer money on it. As Coventry Police did the end of last year, they transitioned uniforms as well to the same vendor, as a matter of fact, that we chose. And I'm proposing to fund a portion of this change through our federally drug forfeiture money, the equitable sharing, in the amount of four hundred dollars per officer times fifty-one, which amounts to twenty thousand four hundred dollars to offset the initial purchase. We're going through measurements now, we anticipate having a transition period, then having it ready for our winter transition in October. And the officers that purchase above and beyond what we're funding, I'm going to front the money to pay for it and it will come out of their uniform allowance that gets paid out the first week of April. So they'll sign off on that agreement before the actual order is placed and will enjoy the bulk order discount by doing this in a timely manner and having hopefully an anticipated smooth transition in October. and having hopefully an anticipated smooth transition in October.
When you say transition, are you...
We switch from short sleeves to long sleeves in October.
Okay, I'm thinking, so color wise, are you, is it going to be, we're going from one color to another and it's done? We're done with the old color, in with the new?
The gray is being phased out, flying cross isn't gonna make it anymore, so we will be essentially in black.
With the Coventry one?
Similar to Coventry there, yeah. West Greenwich, it, it'll look more resemble West Greenwich, because we're gonna maintain the red stripe. And we're also gonna maintain our red shirts, I think that's kind of a, to me, that was an important historical thing. It's a, it's a nice classic, you know, for when we stand up.
But on a shift, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have, on roll call, you wouldn't have two officers in gray and two officers in black?
Correct. When we switch to long sleeves, everybody is the same.
Okay.
Any questions for the chief? Good job with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Especially saving on taxpayers' time.
Fundraising golf tournament sponsored by Council President Dawson.
Yeah, this is the, actually the PASC annual golf tournament. They asked us if we wanna advertise on a T sign, it's a hundred dollars. Does anybody have an issue with that?
Well, it says PIC.
PIC.
PIC, I mean PIC, I'm sorry. I don't have my phone on. Anybody have an issue with that?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Full page, Dave?
Huh?
Full page.
It's a T sign.
Full page.
It's a T sign. Not a book.
Upcoming appointments, Sewer Use Appeals Board, one alternate member with a term to expire, tenth, twenty twenty-one. Board of Tenement Affairs, one term to expire, two, twenty twenty-one. Recreation Committee, one full member. Pension Board Committee, one term to expire, eleven eighteen, twenty twenty. West Ward, the Tuxed River Authority, one three-year term. West Ward Planning Board, one term to expire, seven, two thousand nineteen. West Ward Zoning Board of Review, one term to expire, seven, two thousand nineteen. Public comment, comments will be addressed to the town council, we take them under advisement. When addressing the town council, please state your name and address. Please conduct yourself in an orderly and respectful fashion. The comments of citizens accessing this portion of our meeting are neither adopted nor endorsed by this body, but heard as requested.
Any comment from the council? I do have a couple of minor things, but go ahead.
Yes, actually, so on June fourth, we had a young man come in front of us in Eagle Scout. And I believe we owe him an answer. He had a project that he asked for, and I think we said it would be on the next agenda, so that's not true, it didn't happen.
Eric and Legion, sort of build the...
He wants to do a bench.
Yeah.
Can we get him an an- I'm not sure, there were, there was a liability issue, I think, that the solicitor was gonna look into, who maintains it. I just, I just wanna know, we need to get back to him.
Can we put that on the August sixth agenda also?
We're also looking, I believe we asked about a, something to, to see, like a plan in place for us.
From him.
From him.
We wanted a plan from him, and then we also wanted to make sure that we were all set with the... So, we could reach out, I, I could reach out to Aaron, I work with him, so I can send him an email, just say, hey, what's going on here?
Yeah, I, cause I'm sure he, the young man has a timeframe, my, my guess is he probably wanted to do a lot of it in the summer.
He's probably already working on it, just waiting for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other concerns? Chief Verona, I wish Dave didn't leave, but, lights at girls softball field. There's three lights that are out there holding, they've been holding tournaments there, and they've been bringing people in from New York, Connecticut, Mass. They're having problems with lights. They're all outside lights, and I know we used to use the fire department with the ladder truck to go out there and, and, you know, Chuck Foley told me that, oh, they need to order a lift. I'm like, well, why do we need to order a lift? We got a, we got a ladder truck and we have a bucket truck. The bucket truck might not reach that light, those lights, but definitely your ladder truck does. So, could we get with Dave Pacozi and Tony Duffy and try and get those lights resolved, so they can continue playing? They're, they're there all summer long, and they got three major tournaments coming up, and a lot of people from New York, New Jersey are coming here, and I hate to see them playing in the dock and, and running into issues with that. The other thing I have, two things, Bernie, I, I'd like you, as our town manager, to get a course analysis to number eleven on the MOU. If you don't have a copy of it, I can get you a copy of that. And also, I had a constituent call me on twenty-five Vine Street, if you can look into this matter. He had just received a violation for high grass, ironically, and his garage doors needed to be painted. He came into town hall only to find out that he has a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar lien on his property from two thousand thirteen, seventy-five dollars a day for debris that was in the property, that he removed from his property. And then he, he, he received a letter to remove the debris, he removed the debris, he never got a court letter or anything that he's aware of. And ironically, he walked in here to find out he has a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar lien at twenty-five Vine Street. So, can you take a look at that and find out what the story is? Because the house is valued at one forty-nine and he's got a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar lien, so I'd be a little concerned about that. And yes, he, he has admitted, he is, he is the landlord, and he, his tenants were supposed to be cutting the grass. And I guess there was a breakup between the girl and the boy who lived there, and nobody's cutting the grass now. He would take over the grass and getting that cleaned up, and he painted the garage doors supposedly last weekend. So, if we can at least look at that and say, why is that lien on there, especially...
Judges, I put judges on file for court all the time for stuff like this, and people don't show up in court. And after about the third time, what the judge does is do it daily. And then at the end, they can come in and talk to...
I think they were sending, I, I think they may have sent the letter to the wrong address, the court letter, because he doesn't live at that address. So, the question is, was there a court date that he never, he never even knew about? He said, I, because the individual has called me in the past, he usually deals with all his matters right away. He owns a few different properties, but a hun- he, he said, I had no idea, until he came in here the other day and they told me he had a hundred and sixty... They just threw it at him, they said, oh, he got a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar lien. And... Well, even so, Mary Ann, he took care of the debris, if you take care of the issue, most of the time, you don't have to come to court. So, the question is, he took care of the issue, which was debris, and he, he said he never received a court letter. So, was it, so, something happened? I mean, and how, again, if it didn't come to court, would we still, so the question I have, and, and the question I had for him, was did you ever receive a follow-up letter for anything? Like, after the judge declares something, that's fine, but shouldn't the minimum housing inspector go by and check it to make sure if, if the issue's been resolved, maybe he can report back to the judge? Cause I know he's here, and he can say, yes, twenty-five Vine Street's been cleaned. You know, this, this person's actually willing to pay a fine, whatever the fine is, but a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. I kinda was chuckling, I said, good luck with that one.
Seven years old.
It's two thousand thirteen.
It's like three minimum housing inspectors go at least, right?
Yeah, and, and again, I don't know if Shana, if Shanner at the time...
No, it wasn't.
Wasn't Shanner at two thousand thirteen, who was it? Who was two thousand thirteen?
Mal Hicks.
Jesus, I mean...
I said three ago.
Three, four ago. So, again, you know, can we just take a look at that and find out what happened here, and possibly work with the homeowner on this? Al? Oh, I don't know, it's all in the public conference, but we got two openings on... Just come on up. Two...
We have two openings on the pension board. The reason I'm asking about it is because we're having trouble making quorum sometimes. I guess maybe because of the weather, whatever, but is there been any advertisement for that or anything?
It's on the agenda here, and just nobody's...
That says one position, we got two, and they've been at it for a while, so.
Mary Ann, can you double check that second position, please?
Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Derek?
Um, one thing I wanna ask, we're talking about overgrowth, is riding through town, the cemeteries. And I know that was a project, I believe, last year. And it looked good, but now, they're all overgrown again. And I know personnel's a problem, I get it. I just, driving through town, I say to myself, these are people's loved ones that are buried, not only in the ground, but in the grass, on top of it, so.
I know Councilman Messier and I had an individual approach us.
Yeah, the, he did the, the grave, uh, I forget the name of the, they, they do it in Warwick, and they, they kind of do maintenance on the graveyards, whether it's like...
He wants to sit down and meet with us, they wanna, we used to have...
You think it's something you should outsource?
Well, well, we used to, well, we used to have...
I think they were volunteer, I think they were a volunteer group, too.
Yeah, even better.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, well, we used to have a group that was in charge of the cemeteries.
Right.
It got abolished because...
That was the, the Boy Scouts, right?
No, it was, it was actually a, a group, a volunteer group, just like, you know, it would be, we'd appoint them, they wanna, they wanna, and they, they would schedule that and do that. Well, that group got a little... It just disassembled, and, and Councilwoman Gustafson at the time was one of the ones in support of disassembly on that group, because we weren't fulfilling the job, and we, we had a DPW staff that said they would be able to take care of it at the time. Unfortunately, and I think there's certain times of the year, you're not allowed in there either, and I, and I gotta verify which month. But Councilman Messier and I wanna try to catch up with that gentleman, I, I have to go back and...
Yeah, I'm just saying, I mean, riding through town, I just see it, and I say, I know we were on top of it at one time.
Who, who do, uh, who do they need to get permission from if they were to like form, like, I know this, this organization, from each individual, but, but some of those graveyards are owned by the...
Historical Cemetery Society. Historical State.
So, we could do that without having to, we just, we could do it on our own.
I, I got information from Mark Corullo in two thousand sixteen, and I spoke with, with former DPW Director Lombardi, still here. He gave me a book, it was, it was a novel, and it had all different types of regulations on it. And when I went to, I spoke with Mark Corullo at length with this, and there's a process to it. And it's, most of them are owned by families, and so, he, I mean, it's a long process. You have to try and contact the family, see if, see if they know about it, first of all, and if they would be willing to take it over. And, and, I mean, I denied it a hundred times, it's no. But that's when the town can go and, and go in and take it over.
Unless the diocese owns the property and they have to...
Right, so there's a lot of, it's, it's not, it's, it should be just, all right, let's just go do it. But, but they are, they are, Derek, you're right, they're, it's, it's a lot of work, and it's not, it's not just going in there and mowing now, it's...
I've been traveling Church Street a lot, and I see that one at the corner of Church Street, inclusive.
I see it every day.
Yeah.
Every day.
Totally agree.
All right, I got something I just need to go over here real quick. As we all know, the litigation, Noon's Lane's over, for the most part. During litigation, I came up with something, I wanna talk to you about this, Dave. You go into tax assessor's office, and I have a photograph here of it, there is a plot map in there of that industrial lengths section. And in there, on the plot map, the different lots were hand drawn and stuff scribbled out. Number, plot numbers changed and all this stuff. And on that map, there's no names of streets over there, right of ways. And I was just sat on this for a while, and I just waited till this thing was over, because it just, it's been a mess for three years. Yeah, today, I get informed, there's a new one in place. The one that was drawn has been removed from its location, and a new one is in its place. And in its place is a rendering of the map. And on that map is, I brought you a copy. And on that map is Garrett Lane. This is the old map that was handwritten and changed with a marker, I guess a sharpie. This is the one that's in here now, okay? And on there, there's no Garrett Lane, there's no Noon's Lane, there's nothing. On this one, we have Garrett Lane, but it's not marked as a street. And we have Noon's Lane, it's not marked at all, but more so is the driveway for this lot. Now, I have two court orders over that I'm gonna give to you. That Noon's Lane is a right of way, it was a right of way, adopted by the town in two thousand, I believe, five. I have all paperwork behind me. I want this map changed to what it belongs to be, as this being Noon's Lane. And that can be Garrett Lane, it can be whatever you wanna make it. But as far as I'm concerned, these two maps don't match at all. This one was handwritten at the time. This is, here is Garrett Lane, which is a private right of way, just as well as Noon's Lane is. So, at the town level, the two maps should match, or at least one of them should match what everything is. For three years of our lives, fifty thousand dollars in attorney fees, I would appreciate that the Noon's Lane that I discovered is and was a right of way, private right of way. If we're gonna have Garrett Lane on here, we're gonna have Noon's Lane on here.
All right, just a quick question for the manager. I'm gonna give these to you, you can look into this, but who would change the maps, like?
So, somebody went in there and drew on that thing during litigation. And I'm gonna tell you, from everything that we've gone through, the person that made those changes is sitting in this room. I'm gonna leave it at that, okay? The, um, so now that we're all on a, now I'm gonna start reading this. So, now that we're all on the same page, Noon's Lane has always been a private right of way for our lot and others since the town accepted it in a record, and recorded it in two thousand and five. I just presented you a copy of that. I'm gonna present you now with a copy of our investment, okay? This tells you... This one, I got two of them here. This one tells the town that Noon's Lane has been decided beyond a reasonable doubt in a court of law and county courthouse, that it is a private right of way for my lot, two sixty-nine and lot two seventy. That's a court order. Here is my court order for Noon's Lane to be, for all impediments to be removed within thirty days from June twenty-seventh, which will be July twenty-seventh. These two court orders, Mary Ann, I would like these to be filed in the town.
Court orders?
They're court orders, I want them stamped.
What do you mean?
Not on file and land evidence, you just want them...
I want them so that we all know that I handed these over as court orders up to Noon's Lane.
Where do you want me to put those?
I don't know, I've given you a couple already, or, or one already.
Is this seven fifteen?
My dad had you stamp one already.
You can, you can, you can, you can date stamp them.
Yeah.
Right.
Date and time stamp them and file them.
Okay, so, that's just telling you that in the court of law, beyond a reasonable doubt, Noon's Lane is a private right of way in the town of West Warren. So, going back to the maps, I'm looking for the maps to match what it is in real life. And on July twenty-seventh, Reed's Landscaping will be on their land via Noon's Lane. Three years, fifty thousand dollars for something that was filed in the town in two thousand and five, Mr. Solicitor.
Derek, let me ask you a question. This is dated seven fifteen nineteen, which is... Yesterday? Is that thirty days?
That was the day, no, that was the day that the court order was signed and delivered.
That's, that's what I'm saying, but...
But the date...
Date's gonna be in the first paragraph.
Twenty-seven day, I'm sure.
So, the litigation, a lot of things is over. It's been decided. I just want the maps in this town hall, I'm sure there might be a couple more that have been edited during litigation. I would like them to match what me and my family fought for three years to prove. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Derek, no?
Motion to adjourn.
Wait, oops, sorry. One or two meetings in August? One. Paul needs to know.
I would say one, I would say one, and then if something comes up, which, then we could...
August sixth it is. Motion to...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you for everybody that stuck with us for four hours and twenty-one minutes. You're the real heroes, actually.
Thanks for being here, Bernie.
Al, can I just, who do, who do you think there's a vacancy for? I don't have...